Welcome to the Sewer Commissioners Meeting of March 24th. I'm going to have each sewer commissioner say their names so we can ensure that we have a quorum, starting with you, Jamie.
Jamie Stevins.
Jennifer Stacy.
Mark Lamb.
Doty Phil Giannetti.
Craig Barger.
And then we have our Town Administrator Connor Reed, Assistant Town Administrator Sean Dugan, and Executive Assistant Elizabeth Heck. So we're going to jump right into this first item with a discussion. Oh, I do have to say, I'm sorry, jumping ahead, jumping ahead of myself here. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on ECAT. It is a Zoom meeting, so if we do have attendees on the line that have questions, Sean, just alert me. We have a very packed schedule tonight, so with all, everything for the whole meeting, and I'll remind people as they come in, we will allow questions from the public, but they'll be limited to one question per person and like one, two minutes tops. There won't be any back and forth on these questions tonight. So with that, the first item that we have on the agenda is a discussion and vote for assessment of sewer privilege fees. Sean? Greg, do you want to come up and sit with us? So we have a memo here talking about 390 Bay Road and 482 Foundry Street for a commercial property that would like to tie into the sewer. And so we'll be, as we did at our last meeting, talking about privilege fees for this.
My name is Craig Swan. I'm the Deputy Director of Public Works. We've been working with Gen Two New England Properties about expanding the two properties at 390 Bay Road, which was formerly, for those of you who may remember, in the Five Corners intersection, used to be an ATM. It's currently a daycare lot. There's also a property next door at 482 Foundry Street that was a single-family home. They're combining the two lots into one larger lot, and they're proposing to build a Taco Bell restaurant. Twenty seats on the inside, drive-through on the outside. And it has gone through planning. It's been approved. The last step now is to get them sewer capacity. Based on our calculations from past precedent, I'm going to recommend two SBUs be charged to the restaurant. The existing house that was there before was charged one as part of the Five Corners Sewer Project. And so the one outstanding SBU, nineteen thousand eight hundred thirty-seven dollars for a privilege fee.
So that first SBU, are they already tied in and they've paid for that and everything?
No, there is nothing, that property was never connected.
So Taco Bell will have to pay for?
True.
They'll pay for the sewer betterment and the privilege fee?
Yes.
So?
So if the, if, that's correct. The sewer betterment will carry over to that property. If it hasn't already been paid off, I can check with Linda. But they would still have an outstanding one privilege fee, one SBU for a privilege fee to purchase before they can connect to the sewer.
Okay. So if that hasn't been purchased already, they're going to essentially be buying to, an SBU and a privilege fee?
Well, okay. So they already have, they bought the house already at 482 Foundry Street.
Yeah.
So they own the lot. When they bought the lot, they bought the one, the one, the betterment unit there, the one SBU that exists already. So they own it and they're paying taxes on it.
Okay.
Okay, I don't know if it's been paid off or not, but they already own it.
Okay.
Okay, so they already have one in their possession. They need to buy another one to get to the recommended amount for the daily flow that they're going to be using on a daily basis.
Okay. So it doesn't matter whether they've tied in initially on that or not? All right, I'm crossing those in my head. All right.
No questions.
Does the board have any questions for the? It's pretty straightforward, I think.
Yeah.
All right, anybody in the public have any questions? All right. With no questions, if somebody would like to make a motion, Craig?
I move that the proposed Taco Bell restaurant at 482 Foundry Street, 390 Bay Road be assessed a privilege fee equivalent to one SBU or nineteen thousand eight hundred thirty-seven dollars.
Second.
So that's Barger and Lamb. And there's nothing outstanding on this that has to be taken care of. So we'll take a vote on that. All in favor? Unanimous. All right. Thank you very much. That was easy.
Thank you.
And then we have the acceptance of the minutes for February 10th, 2025.
So move, Barger.
Second.
That's Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Terrific. And a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So move, Barger.
Second.
Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Terrific. Now we will go into the Select Board meeting.
Six oh five, you're okay?
Is it? Okay. So welcome to the Select Board meeting of March 24th. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And then as this is the start of a new meeting, we're going to go around and do the introductions again and the general openings.
Jamie Stevins.
I'm Jennifer Stacy.
Mark Lamb.
Doty Phil Giannetti.
Craig Barger.
And then we have Town Administrator Connor Reed, Assistant Town Administrator Sean Dugan, and Executive Assistant Elizabeth Heck. This meeting is being televised and broadcast on local cable. It is a Zoom meeting, so if we do have people on the call via Zoom, please post your questions into the Q and A, and Sean will let us know. The way that we do these, do these, the order is that we will talk about the topic. The Select Board will ask their questions. We'll open it up to the public in the Zoom. We'll ask people to just limit their comments to one comment or question. We're not going to have back and forth on things because we have a really packed schedule tonight. So the same goes with people online. If you do have a question, any point in the meeting, please put your best question forward because we're just not going to do back and forth like we have at some other meetings. So our first item on the agenda is a public hearing. And Craig, if you want to read the public notice?
Select Board of Easton, as licensing authorities, will hold a public hearing in the Colleen A. Corona Boardroom, 136 Elm Street, Easton, Mass., Monday, March 24th, 2025, at 6:05 PM to consider and act upon the application of LTP Pickleball LLC for change of hours for an existing Section 12 on-premises restaurant all-alcoholic beverages license for premises located at 7 Lois Lane, Easton, Mass., with a plan on file at the Select Board's office.
Terrific. So, hold on while I just get to this. So we have a public hearing notice and a letter requesting a change of hours of a Section 12 on-premises restaurant all-alcoholic beverages license for LTP Pickleball LLC at 7 Lois Lane. The establishment's current hours are Sunday to Saturday from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. They're seeking to expand their hours on Sunday from 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM and Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 12:00 AM. Town departments have reviewed the application. So do you want to come up and just tell us a little bit about? Just introduce yourself and then we just want to hear what's going on there and why you're looking for the extension.
I'm Heather Tixier. I'm one of the owners over at LTP Pickleball. We have been opened for just over two months right now. Currently, we have over twenty-one hundred members.
Wow.
Yep, that have joined. So right now, the reason being, we're kind of booked. That's good. But we're trying to extend our hours, like all our leagues. We're having functions, tournaments, events, and we're trying to extend our hours. And people are getting off the courts and they're wanting to still eat and drink. So that's kind of why we're trying to extend the hours a little bit so that they can, we can just bring that to them.
This might be one of the fastest success stories that I've heard of. You know, we went there your first week and it was jam-packed, so.
Yeah, it's been great.
It's really great.
Yes.
Any questions from the board?
I'll just say that, yeah, we've had the opportunity to be there with an Eastern Youth Basketball fundraiser, and it was fantastic packed. And you guys did an amazing job hosting everybody.
Thank you.
And it was fantastic venue.
Appreciate that.
My only question would have been around, you know, if there's any concern with the hours, but it's not like the town, there's been no issues with police or neighborhood issues. So fantastic. Best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Any opportunity to generate more revenue, be more successful, and serve the public? Fantastic.
Thank you.
I was very impressed with the open house. It was packed. It was terrific. Congratulations to you guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, it sounds to me like everything's running smooth. We haven't gotten any complaints about anything, so that's a good sign. And really very excited to have your company choose Easton to do business. And it's really great for our bottom line. You know, when we're talking about success, we're also hearing meal stacks and, you know, things that really strengthen our economy here and employing local people. It's exactly the kind of model that, you know, we aspire to encourage people to come and stock their business in Easton. So I just want to congratulate you on that.
Thank you.
Well, if there's no comments or questions, Craig?
I move to approve the change of hours of a Section 12 on-premises restaurant all-alcoholic beverages license for LTP Pickleball LLC situated at 7 Lois Lane, Easton, Mass., changing the hours to Sunday from 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM and Monday through Saturday from 9:00 AM to 12:00 AM, contingent upon payment of the outstanding tax bill.
Second.
So that's Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. Thank you for being here. The next item on the agenda is the Town Administrator's update for fiscal year 2026.
Sorry, but it's timed for six thirty.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't notice that. All right, let's jump ahead to item four. Deputy Director of Health and Community Services, Joseph Pitti, the Town of Easton and Health and Community Services, was recognized with the 2025 Regional Community Impact Award for the South Shore region. So we wanted Joe to come in tonight so that we could celebrate this great award. And Connor, did you want to add anything as an intro?
Sure. So Easton, and specifically Easton's Department of Health and Community Services, has been recognized by Massachusetts Recreation Parks Association as a recipient of the 2025 Regional Community Impact of the Year Award for the South Shore region. Joe, if I start taking what you are going to cover, just interrupt me. But Easton was recognized for its work to expand inclusion through development of a shared mission group that's brought together town and community groups with overlapping missions and the priority of serving residents with disabilities. The group has met many times over the past year. They've fostered an inclusive and supportive community for sharing information, events, and resources with one another. There's only a small amount of these awards issued by the Massachusetts Rec and Park Association every year. And the Community Impact Award is considered to be one of the most prestigious. So I doubt Joe's not going to congratulate himself. So I want to say congratulations, Joe, and also to Tana, the Chair of the Recreation Commission, for your whole team for receiving this award and the work that you've done to make inclusion a priority. So again, I hope I didn't steal your thunder, but I wanted to give that plug and to say thank you for your work and thank you, Tana, and to recognize what you're both doing.
Thank you. We are beyond excited. Winning an award like this is not easy, and it's a testament to not only the work that the Rec Commission and Health and Community Services more broadly has done, but it really is a town award. I want to recognize the 12 other groups that are a part of this initiative, what they've brought to the table and how they've relentlessly bought in since day one. These 12 groups range, as Connor had mentioned, from local nonprofit leaders to municipal boards and committees, departments, as well as our partners at the school. So it's been really gratifying to see sort of the tangible and intangible impacts from this. I'm excited to see what we're able to accomplish. As we were at the banquet receiving the award, I couldn't help but notice some of the other award recipients that were alongside us. It was some of the likes of Lexington, Brookline, Newton, Wall of Tham, Danvers. Between, you know, the five departments that run around us, you know, this is your, the theme is doing less with more and financial efficiencies. Between the five departments, they had 50 full-time equivalents and we're at mighty two and a half staff that's able to accomplish a great deal of impact. So I definitely want to recognize the work that Shay and Jeff have done, bringing a lot of these initiatives to light and making a lot of the programming components of this possible as well as being bought into the initiative itself. It means a lot to me.
That's great. Tana, did you want to say anything?
As Recreation Commission Chair, just congratulations to Joe and your group. We're very proud of all your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to announce too that this year will run, to my knowledge, will be the first century-friendly program our department's run. Will be complementing the traditional egg hunt that Easton's run in past years. It's grown to be just too large. I think last year we had about 200 participants. So a century-friendly component is sort of a no-brainer when it comes to an environment. It's a little overwhelming for me to manage. I'm sure there are families in town who are looking for a quieter, more welcoming atmosphere. We're hoping to parlay that into partnering with the Tricentennial and offering them some insights, some of our equipment that we've recently purchased so they can have some century-friendly and welcome others into the fold that may not have felt like they belonged or were invited. So really excited about what's to come in the future.
That's great. Questions from the board, comments? Jamie?
Yeah, this is fantastic. So Joe, Tana, thank you both. And thank you to, like you mentioned, all the folks that are behind the scenes and doing a lot of the human's work. So great job.
I'll echo that fantastic work from you and from everyone that you work with and all the stakeholders on this initiative and the award. And I think it's really a testament to the values of the community, of the community that we, you know, recognize the importance of making sure that this is an important group that we serve and look out for. So thank you so much for making that a priority.
Thank you.
Fantastic job. Thank you on behalf of the entire town, the board. What you've done with what you have is remarkable. I applaud you. I can't say I'm that surprised. But one of the best things about you is your humility through all of it and, you know, day in and day out and giving credit to other people. So thank you.
Did deserve recognition, but thank you.
Congratulations, Joe.
So I just want to say, when, you know, I had the privilege of being part of your interview team, and you talked about this stuff, you know, during the interview of how you wanted to incorporate more access to everybody, be more welcoming to all ages and particularly people with different abilities. I do work with the Commission on Disabilities in Easton, and you've come to our meetings and you've been really engaged. And I feel like, you know, when people know this is happening, in our regular day-to-day life, if we're not impacted by a disability ourselves or have somebody in our family, we don't really think about it too much. But once you bring attention to it like this, with the things that you've convened this group together, you can't unsee the things that you talk about and realize, you know, noticing things, walking through a park and the wastebasket is way in on the grass and you can't access it in a wheelchair. You can't unsee those things and you start to make everybody aware. So, you know, I feel like this is broader than just, not just, but broader than an award at a point in time. The work that you've been doing is really life-changing to a lot of people in the community. And the Commission on Disabilities, I feel, certainly recognizes that. I've talked with Brockton Area Arc, the House of Possibilities, a lot of people that are on that group that you work with. And they're just thrilled to finally be recognized because in the disability world, a lot of people don't, they get overlooked and people don't look through their lens when they're building housing or roads or parks or any of the amenities of the things that we do. For you to say that you're going to, you're work with the Tricentennial Committee, that's huge because there's so many events coming up. And, you know, unless you're really a part of that world, there's a lot of things that you just don't notice. So I just think it's, I'm so excited and really congratulate you for the award, but really the work behind the scenes and the proactiveness that you've approached with this.
I'm just grateful there's so many people that have an open mind and just a caring heart to be a part of it. But thank you all.
Great. Can we get a picture with Joe, Select Board?
Sure.
For social media? All right, we're going to get a picture with you.
For what? Oh, no, no, I'm good. I just don't want to be in the mirror because I always end up being in the background of the mirror. It's very, very awkward for me. All right, I'm going to take a bunch. Okay, great. I have 17 of them ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Jeff. Thank you for doing the touch.
Congratulations. That's very not noticeable.
All right, let's go to number five. The road closure request for the Easton Tricentennial Committee's Arts and Culture Festival. Joan, if you want to come up?
Joan Lundgren, 20 Reynolds Street, here in Easton. I am here on behalf of the Tricentennial, and I'm co-chair of the Arts and Cultural Festival, which will take place on April 26th on the first floor of Oaks Ames Hall. And then I am here to request the street closure where Barrows comes into Main. And I'd like that to be closed from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The event runs from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, but we're going to have one, possibly two tents erected, and they're large tents, 20 by 40. So they're going to have to come very early in the morning to set the tents up. The vendors, artists, and the food establishments will be coming in probably at 9:00 AM to set up. So six will give them ample opportunity to get the tent up. The event ends at four, so then we're, so that we can get the tent down and out of the way, we're asking until six. And I want to close it just that day, obviously, not to hold up traffic on Friday. I did fill an application out for the Police Department, and I believe Elizabeth told me they have recommended six policemen, which will be in my budget to take care of that.
Great. So just tell us a little bit about the Arts Festival. You have a call for artists now? Or is that closed already?
Yeah, basically, we fill the artists. We have about 35 of them right now.
Great.
Plus a couple of local establishments. Auntie Zaza's Stash. So that will be the art portion of it. We'll have music all day. We have local artists coming in to play music. And I'm in the process now of getting restaurants. And I'm trying to bring back the Taste of Easton, but I'm calling it Taste of the Town. And I'm asking area residents, restaurants to participate and give out bites of food and publicize their establishment. I have, I have a handful that are definite yeses right now. Of course, McGuire's Farmer's Daughter, Mother's Daughter, Perrings. There's a few with the Villa, El Mariachi. And there's others I'm working that I hope will come in. It's a big ask because you're asking somebody to come for a couple of hours to give food out. Small, small amounts, but it's, you know, on their time.
Right.
So, so it's hard. So I'm trying to balance that with the restaurants. But I think it's going to be a great day for everybody.
Yeah, it sounds great. Any questions, comments?
Sounds fantastic, Joan.
Good, good. I hope to see you all there.
For sure.
Good.
So one of the things I think that was important to the Tricentennial Committee is that you have these events and that they're free to the public.
Yep.
So that there isn't a cost barrier to people attending these community events. And so there's no tickets required for this?
No, no. And the motto for this event is where art meets the community. So we want, you know, people of all ages to come out concurrently at Queeset House and the Ames Freed Library. There'll be events going on as well. And then the next stage is to give a plug, Unity Church. We'll follow up this weekend by having a service, candlelight service. They'll have music. Ed Hands, our local historian, will be there and they'll have an interactive service about history, the stained glass windows. And it's going to be a nice weekend.
Excellent. And if people want to find out more detail about this, you can go to www.easton300.org.
Yes.
And you'll see the beautiful, the marketing is really, really well done for this, by the way.
Thank you.
And so very clear, very aesthetically pleasing, but really great work.
I have a lot of very large, oversized signs that I'll start putting up this week just to remind everybody about it.
Great.
And if there's any restaurants out there listening that want to be a part of this, I have even gone so far, I don't think it's on this one. It's my other poster I did, calling all restaurants. Call me personally, 508-692-8060. And that's my personal cell. I put it on everything, so call me. It's always in my pocket and I always answer it.
It's a great opportunity for restaurants to showcase, like comparing it to the former Taste of Easton. That was always packed and people loved it.
Yeah.
So being part of a big, once-in-a-lifetime, tricentennial event like this is really great.
Thank you, Al.
All right.
Thanks, Joan.
Craig?
I move to approve the road closure request to Easton Tricentennial Committee's Arts and Culture Festival, April 26th, 2025, from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Barrow Street, Main Street, in front of the Rockery and Oaks Ames Memorial Hall.
Second.
That's Barger and Lamb. And also just mentioning in here that you'll be working with the town to get the permits for the tents and the police details. So I just want to put that in the public realm.
Yes, yes.
All right, so that's Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Great.
Thank you, Al.
Looking forward to it, Joan.
Thank you.
Doty, there's five minutes. Do you want to skip six and do seven or do, is that time a concern?
Yeah, why don't we do seven? That will be fairly quick. So a few weeks back, we had, we had some residents that were concerned with a parking issue on Morse Road. And we spoke about it on February 24th. This is a situation where Southeastern Regional Technical School has told their 11th grade students that they can't park on-site. They can't, they don't want them to drive their cars to school. They want them to take the bus to get there. And there's not enough parking for them. So as a result of that, you know, a lot of students have things after school. They have siblings they have to care for, they have jobs. There's a lot of reasons why young people get their license and want to drive to school. So they are not, they're not able to park on the school property and they're parking on Morse Road. So it's, you know, the neighbors are concerned about it. The board is concerned about it. It is a public safety issue for the, for the kids that are parking on Morse Road, running across the street to the school. Early in the morning, there's solar glare on the street. People drive very fast on the street. So at our last meeting, the superintendent did come in by Zoom. She said that she was, you know, they were, they know it's an issue. They're trying to think of ways to work on it. So the dilemma that we have is that this is, this is a school problem that they need to solve. That doesn't mean that we don't care about it or that we don't want to do anything. One of the suggestions was to put signs up. And I just, I don't think that the signs are going to be effective. I think the students will still park there. And then I think we'll get calls, why aren't the police ticketing the students? And if you've been following any of our meetings, we are in a budget crisis right now. We don't have the availability of police to ticket students, even if we thought that was the right thing to do, which I personally don't think is the right thing to do, to ticket students while they're trying to get to school. I did get some correspondence back from the superintendent, which I don't want to really go into the details of it where she is not here tonight. We don't typically talk about people unless they're in the room. So what I will say is that they are trying to work on something. She has corresponded and it's a continuing, it's a continuing thing that they're doing. And so I guess what we were looking to vote on is not how to solve their problem, but do, how do we control the parking on Morse Road? So I did go down there this morning before work and I looked and there was 18 cars parked in front of the cemetery. They weren't blocking anything. You know, they are public roads and people can park on them. So it's, the parking issue isn't the biggest concern. The concern is really about students crossing that busy street. So we're, we're just going to have to stick close to Southeastern Regional, make sure they're continuing to work on it. I will say that we do have a rep on the school committee there, and her name is Kelsey Harrington. Her information is listed on their website. Her, her information is listed on their website. And I think that people who have concerns about it should direct their questions and comments to her because she's an elected representative from our community. And that's her job is to answer questions for the school. So I don't, I, I had talked to Jamie about this because Jamie lives in the neighborhood. And I just want to see if you have anything that you want to add, Jamie, or?
Well, yes, we do need to take it up with the Southeastern Regional School District's School Committee. And again, from the town's perspective, we're going to continue to apply pressure because each passing day is an opportunity for a child to get hit crossing Foundry Street, which we all know is a 40 mile an hour zone. Cars are not going 40, they're going 50. And it's not safe to put an adult out there. We've said that from the police department's perspective and the school has said that from their perspective, that it's not safe to put an adult out there to help these kids cross the street. So this is absolutely ridiculous that we're allowing these kids to cross on their own and expecting traffic to see them, whether it's morning and you've got solar glare as you're heading east on 106, or you're popping out of the wood line at random spots where a car is not expecting you because there are no crosswalks, rightfully so, on a street with 40 mile an hour zone. So that's, it's a massive safety concern.
Yeah. And I'll, I'll add that when I was there this morning, I did drive through the parking lot and I saw about 20 or 30 spaces that were empty. So, you know, further discussion should be, do they have somebody out there that can direct traffic? Or, you know, bring people in so that they can tell them where to park? Or there's got to be a way to do it. This can't be the first time that this has ever happened somewhere. But ultimately, they do need to come up with a solution. I feel like there's some good faith on, on the part of the superintendent to make that happen. But we can't forget about it. And I feel like we need to stay connected until we know that that issue is resolved. And, you know, Jamie, we're certainly counting on you to lead that for us and, and keep us informed. I'm certainly going to help you and be standing with you. But you're, you're the one who really has the pulse of what's going on there.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Any comments or questions from the audience? Do you want to come up to the microphone?
Thank you, Jill. I didn't expect to speak, but I'm Tom Crook, I live on one Morse Road. And the direction, I think, from the board was pretty clear on February 24th, I think, to come back with solutions. So, Dottie, I understand what you're saying, but you don't want to get, what was the report back? I'm just curious, what did she respond? Because she said a month ago.
Just that they're in negotiations and right now if we divulge what they're working on, then it could potentially negatively affect their side.
So first, I'd like to make a request that we put it on for April 24th?
I don't, I don't know that, I don't know that that, so what comes before this board is more policy? Or it's, that's not going to change. This will just be something that we advocate for because the board's not going to vote to do anything to, to change it. You know what I mean?
Well, that's the only, that's the only where we differ. Because I'm a taxpayer and I probably, Linder and I are probably being affected by this more than anyone on Morse Road. I know you're technically, Jamie, not on Morse Road. Lee's is not really being affected and the new house is not being affected. But, you know, we often talk, and I hear often talk especially about how we value the green space. Because, Dottie, you probably noticed this morning, this, seven cars parked on green space, not on the road, on green space.
Yep.
That, that abuts the cemetery. There's also two cars parked on the cemetery, probably 10 feet from a grid. So anybody on the cemetery committee, I think, would probably have some thoughts of that. But I just want to be heard. I understand that it's bureaucracy. I, I don't think, I don't feel that I have to go and fight it with Southeastern Regional. And I don't think, and I don't have, I thought we were making some progress, but I don't think we are. So I just want to be heard, so.
Well, I think we are making progress because we are in communication with them, but it doesn't have, the change doesn't happen fast. There's nothing that this board can do to make that happen faster other than to stay connected with them and keep advocating for it.
Well, yes. And then, you know, we also have to get to DPW because that green space they talked about, you know, that there's been like curbs that have been moved because the town was plowing those green spaces, I don't know why, but they were this winter. You know, so there's a lot of things that, yes, I understand Southeastern Regional, but I just don't feel I'm being represented. So I just want to leave it at that, but I appreciate your time. I know you've got a busy agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
And talk with Jamie, you know, connect, if, I didn't know that curbs were being moved. You know, I, if there's things like that that we haven't covered, let us know and we will, we'll incorporate that into what we're doing. So I'm sorry that you feel that you haven't been heard because I, I feel like.
I think this is very fixable, to your point, Dottie. I think it's very fixable. I think it's very minor. And I think we're just caught up with, if they don't want to do something, we don't want to do something. It's just frustrating on a simple issue that could be corrected in less than a day. But I, I'm not going, you know, I understand, I've gone through every channel. I've talked to Cemetery Committee, I think, which is folded into something now. You know, brought it to the select work. So I just want to bring awareness around it.
Sure.
And again, from a safety perspective, I think it sits with, you guys just got to, if it sits with Southeastern Regional, it sits with you guys. So that's the only thing, because something will happen. Hopefully it doesn't, but something will happen. But I appreciate the time to be heard.
Well, I can assure you, we asked, we're not dropping it and we are still going to stay in touch with Southeastern Regional.
Just let me know.
And we'll update you. Okay. All right, thank you. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, we will move on. We're at 6:35, so Hunter, do you want to do your budget?
All right, so for the sake of when this gets edited on rebroadcast, good evening. Thank you, Dottie. Tonight I'll be updating the board on the second round of changes to the fiscal '26 operating budget. Anyone watching this or following along can get the full copy of the presentation at eastern MA.us/fy26budget. So we've made important progress reducing the deficit. In January, we started with a deficit of nearly 6.4 million and by February reduced that to 5.4 million with a combination of budget cuts and revenue adjustments. Tonight, we'll reduce the deficit further to 2.29 million. This progress is not made by finding money. It is made with additional deep cuts to our operating budgets and the application of more than 2 million in stabilization funds. The fiscal '26 non-override budget will enact the largest cuts to town and school operations since at least the 2008 recession. Town department requests have been cut from the initial preliminary budget of a 5.3% increase over the current year to a meager 1.6%, taking $784,000 out of our operating budgets and cutting staff levels to the lowest that they've been in years despite being busier than ever across all of our town departments. Six positions are cut entirely with another 0.95 FTE cut via hours being reduced or being moved into fee-based budgets. These cuts don't count cuts we made to positions last year. They don't count the additional vacancies we've frozen due to resignations or long-term absences from injury on duty. Collectively, we will be entering this summer with 11 fewer personnel, which for the town workforce is about 6.5% of our staff than we had last summer. Here's a high-level overview of each specific adjustment. In total, this will reduce the deficit from 5.4 million to 2.29 million. The vast majority of this changed from the application of stabilization funds and cuts to town operating budgets. Budget change two is shown on screen here. It's an additional 526,000 of cuts to town departments, including police, fire, and general government. As I mentioned before, we've now cut 784,000 from town operating requests, dropping the fiscal '26 increase to only 1.6% over the current fiscal year. The police department preliminary request of 5.6 million will be cut by just about $200,000. Those cuts will drop the second officer position in two years, bringing the police department to its lowest staff level in 10 years, 22% below the average of neighboring police agencies. To reduce overtime spending, the detective division will be reduced from four to three detectives. And for comparison, many of those neighbor agencies staff five detectives for dysfunction. This will mean lower clear rates, longer response times, and limited capacity for investigation. Overnight minimum staffing will be reduced from five officers to only four, one in the station and three on the road. This will mean that only one priority call can be immediately answered at a time. These are calls that require two officers to respond for their safety and the public's safety. That second call will need to wait for mutual aid from another community or for the station officer to respond. Easton Police have in recent years assigned a community resource officer three days per week to co-respond and provide non-911 services with our mental health clinician. This connects residents with inpatient mental health care and other resources that cut down on the likelihood of emergency 911 medical call, uh, mental health calls. This will be cut from three days per week to zero to one day per week to reduce overtime. Community overtime funds will be cut, which will significantly cut back on any non-safety-related public events that are important for our police building relationships with our residents. The fire and emergency medical services preliminary request of 6 million will be cut by 284,000. These cuts will eliminate two firefighter positions on top of three additional positions that are currently vacant due to long-term injuries and a resignation recently. Minimum shift staffing will be cut from eight to seven. And on days when only seven firefighters are in, Lothrup Street Station will close and we will only be able to run a single ambulance. The fire department responds to eight to 10 medical 911s every day. And dropping a one ambulance would have a significant negative impact on response times for any concurrent caller and also reduce our revenue from ambulance transports. If you are the second 911 caller waiting on a mutual aid ambulance, this can be the difference in a town response from in Easton of six minutes or less to 10, 15, or more minutes if it's from a neighboring community. Community paramedicine, which is a partnership between the fire department, paramedic, and health and community services to provide proactive health services to reduce medical 911 emergencies, will also be reduced so that that physician can be reassigned to the line to reduce overtime spending. Training funds will be reduced and community overtime and education will be eliminated. An additional 45,000 is being cut from general government specifically from information technology. In total, general government budgets have been reduced by 154,000, net of an addition of 30,000 to the finance committee reserve line. The cuts to police, fire, and all of our town departments will take Easton backwards in nearly every area of service. They reflect a financial reality that we must balance our budget every year to match our meager revenue growth. They do not reflect what our staff and departments believe is the appropriate level of service for our community. Despite the significant uncertainty next year poses to our public service and our workforce, we have some good news tonight, which is that six of our seven town unions have taken one-year contract extensions for their expiring bargaining agreements that fit within the 2% cost of living adjustment budget that we carry. They represent the large majority of our workforce and their agreements provide a critical measure of planning stability during a very volatile time. And I know I speak for myself and the full board when I say that I appreciate tremendously their collaboration and their service to this community. The Easton schools are continuing their work to reduce their level of service budget request. Due to the size of the Easton school budget within our total budget, these cuts will be substantial. The Easton fiscal '26 budget for the schools, inclusive of cuts to their preliminary requests, will be presented to the school committee on April 3rd. Moving into fixed costs, looking at our debt service. Our debt service budget remains manageable. Non-exempt debt for routine capital borrowing will increase by 6.7% next year, but that's actually only an increase of 3.6% since fiscal '23. Our non-exempt debt service is very conservatively managed and it constitutes about 2.5% to 3% of our operating budget. Exempt debt service will increase next year by 2.7 million, as will a commensurate amount of tax revenue exempt from Prop 2.5. Given the challenging operating position we face, there may be some wondering whether Easton's debt exclusion projects like Blanche Ames or the police, fire, and public works facilities project are contributing to the shortfall. The answer is no. And the deficit next year cannot be fixed by delaying or stalling an approved project either. The most important fact explaining the why behind this is that these recent projects are funded by debt exclusions, which raise tax revenue to pay for bonds for large capital projects, typically over 20 or 30 years. The revenue raised in the corresponding annual bond payments are exempt from the limits of Prop 2.5 and they're outside of your typical operating income and expense. The exempt revenue raised can only be used to pay for bonds of a specific project and only in the amounts that your actual borrowing ends up costing. That's why when you complete a project under budget, like Blanche Ames, the town doesn't get to keep that excess revenue and allocate it against operating needs. It simply never raises those taxes and therefore the increase is lower than what voters approve. Operating budgets can only be supported by an operating override, which Easton has not approved since 2006. When budgets are tight, as they are now, it's reasonable to ask, well, what can we freeze to save funds for next year? Things like hiring freezes can make sense because those funds are operating dollars. And that's one of the things that the town has already done for nearly all job openings. Because debt exclusions are outside of the standard operating budget, delaying them doesn't save a dollar for your operating deficit, but it would increase the cost that taxpayers face. We don't need to speculate on that point. Market data and Easton's own experience show that delaying a capital project will ultimately cost our taxpayers much, much more. This slide takes publicly available construction cost data from Massachusetts School Building Authority. You could see the cost per square foot of construction on the left rising from 200 to over $1,000 and the year of construction along the bottom. As the board recalls, the pandemic hit mere months after voters approved the debt exclusion for Blanche Ames. It wouldn't have been unreasonable to consider delay of that project in the face of that health crisis, but Easton kept at it. That choice paid off and we completed that project 13 million under budget at substantially lower costs than communities who constructed their schools only two years later paid. I've layered our public safety project here with a green star and you can see that it has a meaningfully higher cost than Blanche Ames on account of it being four years later. You will also notice in the upper right of the screen that projects looking to break ground only one or two years from now are looking at even higher costs per square foot, exceeding 900 and in some cases over $1,000 per square foot, which would add tens of millions of dollars to our current project. So what would that look like? If you take that MSBA data, which through 2023 is based on actuals, a substantial amount of these project costs would increase. In the case of Blanche Ames, if you delayed it by two years, you would add $40 million for a project. A very large amount of the two-year public feasibility process leading to debt exclusions is devoted to assessing timing. Our own experience and this MSBA data show that waiting costs millions. Again, if you delayed Blanche Ames two years due to the pandemic, what was an $82 million project is now a $120 million project. If we were to delay the police, fire, and public works project for one or two years and it were to cost what towns breaking ground in '27 are expecting, that's another $20 million. Regrettably, we can't control the economic challenges that will arise in any one operating year over the course of capital projects that take 10 years or more from conception through numerous rounds of voter approval and completion. And while we may be breaking ground on a project this year, that work flows all the way back to 2013. Easton's leadership and voters at that time recognized the deteriorating condition of many of our town and school facilities and they approved funding for a comprehensive facilities program to address that. Since then, they've approved projects that will replace 84% of all municipal buildings and a full third of all town and school buildings. The debt exclusions are substantial. But they are also on track to replace eight town and school facilities, most of which were 50 to 75 years old at a lower tax impact than many communities today are facing to build a single school building. The operating deficit next year is not caused by these projects and it can't be fixed by halting these projects. There are, however, two very large factors driving the deficit next year. The first of those is shown on screen. Health insurance, property insurance, pension assessments, and regional school assessments have skyrocketed in the past two years. For perspective, when looking at that two-year, $2 million increase to health insurance, that is equal to the previous 10 years of healthcare increases combined. It is greater than 10 years worth of budget increases to the police department. When you look at these four fixed costs that have gone up $3.6 million in two years, think about that number compared to our largest revenues. Non-exempt tax revenue next year, that's the largest increase of any revenue that we are planning for next year. We'll go up 2.6 million next year. Our next largest source of revenue, which is state aid, is forecast to increase 361,000 next year, which is 1/10 of what these four items have grown in two years. Every single town department, police, fire, public works, general government, health and community service, and library will increase by 300,000 next year when these four items have gone up by 3.6 million. Since the last budget update, the GIC set their final rates for fiscal '26 for healthcare and they were actually worse than the 12% forecast that they gave and we were carrying. Plans ranged from a low of a 10% increase to more than a 17% year-over-year increase. We've taken numerous actions since then to mitigate these increases, including the adoption of future retiree premium contribution changes, the convening of town and school unions to assess active healthcare premium splits, and expanding the town's insurance opt-out programs to try to incentivize as many folks as we can, if they have appropriate other insurance, to leave the insurance pool and minimize our costs. The second of two major drivers of the deficit next year is our long history as a minimum aid community, entitled to as little as $30 per student of new state education funding per year, which shakes out to about 100,000 of new state revenue against a $50 million school budget. Had Easton's fiscal 2008 state aid simply kept pace with inflation, today we would be receiving 17 million rather than 12.9. In the past two years, the number of schools that have slid into minimum aid status has exploded and now 77% of all public schools in Massachusetts fall into this funding category. It's not an accident that this timing and this growth of minimum aid districts coincides with the rate of operating override requests doubling around the state. Which brings us to the closing piece of this presentation on revenue. Easton sought an operating override in 2016 to mitigate that structural revenue gap caused by state aid, and it failed. Since then, we've adopted conservative operating budgets and worked hard to fortify our financial position. Some of our progress is shown here on screen. But the short version is that our department leaders and Easton voters, who have for years supported tight budgets to build our reserves, deserve thanks for their judiciousness. We have a meaningful capacity to blunt the impact of cuts next year thanks to this work. And had we not built our reserves, more than doubling our total reserves, more than quadrupling our stabilization fund balance, the amount of job cuts and budget cuts to town and school departments would be more than twice as severe as what they are. It's because of our work that we're able to apply what I'm recommending, which is 2,370,000 in stabilization funds, 2,370,000 in stabilization funds, which is near the limit of our policy cap of 33% of the stabilization fund balance to the budget. Coupled with three cash, this represents about 3.5 million in reserves, just over 3% of our total operating cost. This is not sustainable for multiple years. And if there is not an override, we need to understand and recognize that this reserve use is a baked-in cut to town and school budgets in future years. So we've made really important progress, but we haven't reached a balanced budget yet, and that progress has not been without cost. The next major department revision will be the Easton schools, which will be presented to the school committee on April 3rd. Assuming that proposal leads us to have a balanced budget, that will serve as the basis of the April 29 fiscal '26 budget hearing, the Select Board and Finance Committee. It also serves as a floor upon which any override contingent budget is built. We'll work to produce an alternative budget, an override alternative budget in time for that April 29 hearing as well. From there, it will be the choice of Easton's voters which budget is adopted to go into effect this July, based on town meeting, which is May 19th, and a corresponding override election. The date of that election is up to the Select Board to set by law, and it is on your agenda for this evening. As we continue to work towards town meeting, I hope that folks stay engaged, get educated, take part in these really important and difficult choices for your community. All of our work is publicly available, listed websites on screen, and if you are not yet, please sign up for our weekly newsletter. I know we have a pace coming up, so I'll invite questions from the board after they do their presentation, but thank you, Dottie.
Thanks, Connor.
Thank you, Connor.
Now we have Tom and Nancy from the Pace Committee.
Sorry about the tiny size.
No, that's okay. Here than mine.
Tiny, can you feel okay?
They just have to let me know when you want to go to next slide.
Yeah, will do. Appreciate that.
Let us know when you got her up, and we'll get started.
Okay, good to go.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, everybody. It's really great to be here with you again. It represents an awful lot of hard work on behalf of our team, so we just want to open by thanking everybody on our team, several members that are here tonight. But we are happily here to provide our final recommendation, which satisfies our charge. We'll also talk to you tonight about a community compact that we are recommending that the Select Board, the Finance Committee, Pace Committee would recommend that we adopt, which represents a commitment to our residents based upon our overall recommendation of an override, an operational override. So we'll get started, and if you could go to the next slide, and those are the two things we're going to focus on tonight. Next slide, please. So today, we don't have, although I can probably extend it to an hour and a half worth of presentation, but we don't have 55 slides for you. The reality is that we have presented now at the Queeset House, we have presented to you folks, we have presented at the Blanche Ames School, we have held numerous outreach sessions, whether it was a series of Fridays in a row at Dunkin' Donuts, meet and greets at the library, we have had representatives that went to schools, we have gone to the senior center, we have had people who have been on Channel 10 News. So we have really done an incredible job, and I give credit to the team, and I certainly thank the support teams of the town and the schools as well, just so much work of pulling information together, providing comparisons, providing reports, and providing information. So tonight is not about that. While we'll rehash and give some key drivers, just so that anybody that might be listening for the first time can get the benefit of some of that and have some context for our recommendation, but tonight will not be an incredibly lengthy presentation. We did leave this slide in, though, and you'll see it. We think that this truly speaks to the matter and the heart of the matter that we are facing. You heard it in Connor's presentation, that we are facing serious cuts to our programs, to our services, and to how we will engage with the residents of our community. We have a Pace Committee, candidly have known this since before December. That's when it started to gel for us, and I almost said I'm glad, but I appreciate that we are at the point of the process where you're now seeing the real impacts that are forecasted to happen that we have been seeing for months. And I'm sure when you all are able to attend the April 3rd school committee meeting, you'll see even more of an impact on an institution that we, as residents of our community, value, which is the school system. And that's why we left these pictures up.
Sorry, we lost.
That's okay. We know that there's a lot of people that are joining Pace meetings, and I wouldn't be surprised if it's causing a strain on the internet. Well, we're getting that back up. You know, it really is a reflection of the values of Easton. I think, as we've said before, that we can't find the bad person in this, we can't find the smoking gun. We, and I'll just give some of the rest of the presentation that you'll see, but we're a residential-forward community. We know that. We have 72% of our income that comes from property taxes, and we are largely driven by a single-family environment, and we love that. We have what, for the most part, most Easton residents want, and that's a good thing when you are satisfying what your residents are asking for. The challenge with that is it makes you especially susceptible to revenue fluctuations like a state contribution going from 25 cents of every dollar to 13 cents every dollar. We don't have other mechanisms that can grow at an accelerated rate that can potentially offset that, and I think we all know we run roughly $120 million budget, so 10% is meaningful. Next slide after this. Love it. All right, perfect. So this is just going to summarize for you some of the major topics. Again, please, anybody, go to the Pace website, look at any of our presentations, detail, data, numbers, they're all available. But the reality is, I spoke to the revenue challenges we fundamentally have. They're exacerbated by rolling off COVID-related federal relief programs, they're exacerbated by continued weak support from state resources, and candidly, they're exacerbated by residents voting for and supporting the policies that have created a wonderful community in town of Easton, which is a single-family oriented, green space-dominated, with 1/3 of our land that's nontaxable or minimally taxable. And everybody, when we ask at our open houses, what do they value, the first thing that comes up is green space and open space. The second thing in terms of, the first thing that comes up in terms of challenges is new growth, and you can see how those two items can honestly be at odds with each other naturally, and it makes sense. The expense side challenges, I think you saw some of the grids that Connor showed you. We have dozens more, hundreds more, we have thousands of pages of information. Let us know what you'd like to see, and we probably have it in triplicate. But the reality is that we don't overspend. So if there are people that are out there that say Easton simply spends too much, and that's your problem, I can look you all in the eye and say that that is not our problem. It's relative to the revenue and how we generate it perhaps, because there is that imbalance that we have this deficit we have to solve for, but it is not because we have more firefighters, it is not because we have more police department, it is not because we overindex on the number of students per teachers, it is not because we have excess of administrators in our schools, it's not because we have so many people running around our town hall offices that we overindex. We don't. We are either second or last when you compare against major comparable communities on how much we spend. We're something like 44% below general government spend per capita, so that's the town hall and our services, and we're right online in staffing in terms of whether it's administrators or the school system, but we don't overindex. And it's about people. I think you've heard me say that. Roughly 85 cents of every dollar we spend on operations goes to people. We have already reduced the other discretionary spend. The categories that come after people, on the school side, it's special education, which is a requirement and state mandated that we have to pay. It's the bus contract, which we shifted to outsourcing to save money years ago. It's textbooks, kind of hard to get around that. On the town side and on the school side, it's things like utilities. I will only disagree with Connor's presentation in one point, and that is that the capital investments that we have made in a community, and I know it's not the opposite side, but I'm emphasizing something, the capital investments we have made have absolutely saved you. They have reduced tens of millions of dollars of backlogged capital repairs and maintenance to old buildings that we no longer have to pay, and they have reduced our operating expense runway going forward. So for most people can appreciate that there is a very important dynamic of capital investment and operational efficiency. So the cost-side equation, again, there's no bad person in this. I think we have all supported projects and initiatives, or we support education, we try to support our police, our fire, our public safety, our DPW. They all do more with less, such an overused cliche, but I can't impress upon you enough that that is the side of the challenge. The last part that I would just emphasize is that there is a real impact to the residents of our community for the taxes. We have been transparent on this. Our residents pay the second-highest average dollar tax bill amongst all of our surrounding communities, so they're not wrong when they say we have an elevated tax bill. They also have the second-highest home value of all of our surrounding communities. Understanding it's the base that drives your overall tax dollars is good. A good example, I prefer to have $50,000 of increased equity versus Mansfield, and I pay $300 to $400 more per year on average. Like, that makes sense. It doesn't help, though, when people can't access that. It's not a liquid investment, it's their home, and they'll get that at some day, but they will feel real pain. That's the takeaway. And that's the challenge, that we haven't done anything wrong on the spend side, we haven't done anything wrong on the revenue side, new growth is a record last year. So that's the dynamic we are focusing on. From a cost inflation, just, I think Connor hit the big one, utilities, healthcare, other items, the health insurance and pensions we talked about, and the town spend here lets you know that we are $405 less than the state average, that would be $10 million. School spend is $16,600 per pupil, that's 17% less than the state average, that would be $12 million. We're the second-lowest amongst our surrounding communities, and again, we have fewer staff across the board. So if you want to see stats, numbers, data points going back this year, last year, salary information, we have it all. We can tell you, we turned over every rock. I can look you in the eye confidently that you can take that to market and tell your constituents that we have truly looked at every single possible solution, and the regrettable aspect is that we are in this spot because of the things we value, and we have lost control or don't have control over some of the things that have come up this year, especially from a revenue perspective. So with that, we have a charge of providing you an official recommendation, and this is it. We have identified as a Pace Committee that the average size of the challenge is $8.1 million, and we recommend an operational override solution of $7.3 million. And we do believe that there is always appropriately room to try to find efficiencies, gain leverage, and get some expense savings, but in this case, when you look at it department by department, year by year, month by month, person by person, position by position, the answer is not that we spend more on the expense side. It just isn't. I can assure you that I could sit in a room and talk for hours and give you the data and the information, and I would welcome doing that. Thus, why we netted on a revenue-side solution. I do want to let you know, democracy is at work with that. That's the average recommendation of the entire group. And the reason why I bring that up is, A, the spread between the size of the challenge was roughly $7 million to potentially $9 million, super tight for 19 people to have their own opinions, to let you know. And then, if you can see how little is on the expense-side solution, it was pretty nearly unanimous about the fact that we have a revenue-side problem. Now, I do want to emphasize, our committee's charge was to do what we believe was the right solution on the mathematical equation for a sustainable Easton. Whether or not that is, or what isn't, that the residents desire or want, or what we thought might be palatable for a vote, that is not what we are here for, it was not our charge. Our charge was to be truthful and forthright on the gravity of the situation that we face and the key drivers of it. To Connor's point, I can tell you, just from my perspective, it's the first time that I was able to digest the amount of stabilization funds that are being used. That is literally a kick of the can to next year. Doesn't make it wrong, sometimes you do it because it'll enable you to put things in place for next year, but I heartily believe that Connor is absolutely 100% accurate, that all you're doing is delaying the choice of what will be cut, and those will be programs, services, largely people that support that, next year. Doesn't make it wrong, but I'm just letting you know that the situation will not change next year.
And just to be clear, because anyone's tuning in now, there are still cuts.
Yes.
That is mitigating the number of cuts and making it probably the difference of a two-figure number versus three.
Well said.
But you are right, that there will be more in the future if there is not an override.
Right. As a Pace Committee, we recognize that this ask of roughly $7 million of our residents is incredibly meaningful. If I remember the numbers correctly, it's nearly $800, depending upon average home or median home, median home, that we're adding. That is a lot, and there will be people in this community that cannot afford that. Regrettably, no matter what happens, we will impact people's lives meaningfully, whether they lose their jobs, and they go home to their families and their children, and let them know that they no longer have income, and that will happen most likely regardless of where we net. I think that's important to know. Or there will be residents that can't afford to pay this. So whatever can be done to support residents with the programs that we have, and we have a long list of them, but create awareness, create advocacy, create support, continue adding monies to those, continue to find a way to help mitigate the impact of what we're asking the residents of our community to bear, because they are absolutely right, they bear a lot. I think we give them a lot, I think value is a very important consideration there. I know if I get a nice steak versus a cheeseburger, I have a different expectation of value. And I think our town and schools provide a tremendous value for what we are funding them with. However, knowing how much we will be asking of our residents, we have put forth a community compact that we would like you to consider and support. It is a degree of difficult commitments. I think what we're asking is incredibly difficult. I think it only fair, and the Pace Committee in general believes it's only fair, that we ourselves sign up for some very difficult commitments. We're not here to handcuff or create an inability for management or policymaking, but as Nancy goes through this, I think you'll appreciate that they were thoughtful, they were meaningful, and it's our way to try to reflect to the residents that we understand what we're messaging.
Thank you. So the committee took a look at some similar compacts that have been made in numerous towns, when these towns have gone for an override, and looked at numerous scenarios and kinds of details, and really carefully looked at the ones that would be most meaningful for Easton, relevant to Easton and meaningful for Easton. So this compact reflects the committee's belief that key commitments should be made to the residents of Easton should they pass an operating override. So again, just to be clear, these commitments would only be in place should the override get passed at the two points that Connor conveyed, both at the town meeting and the ballot vote. This compact addresses a structural revenue gap that we've just talked about in detail and maximizes the benefit of a Proposition 2.5 override, the override that the committee is recommending, by committing to six primary objectives. These objectives will encourage fiscal responsibility, they promote sustainable growth, which was another thing that the committee was asked to look at, is the sustainability of looking at revenue and this gap in the future, and it will also protect the well-being of the residents. Now, recognizing that things happen in the event of extraordinary unforeseen circumstances, examples would be a major natural disaster, a public health emergency, or a significant economic crisis, then there's an opportunity for this committee to be subject to the review, basically at the request of the boards and committees that we are asking to sign it, the Select Board, the school committee, or the Finance Committee. And we would expect that those reviews would be a public hearing, so the public and unions involved in town could comment. Next slide, please. So the first two are on this slide. We would ask for a commitment that there be no debt exclusion for five years. That seems reasonable with all of the excellent work that's being, has been done on the schools and will be done on our municipal buildings, and that there be no operational override for at least four years. And again, keeping in mind that our community has gone 19 years without an override, the second-longest of all of our comparative communities. So in addition to that, we would expect that exceptions to this would only be permitted in extraordinary circumstances, and I believe that the Select Board has the details of this compact.
Yeah.
Were you given a copy of that this evening? So you'll see that all of these are elaborated on, and of course, this will be available to the public. I'm just hitting some of the highlights to not read you the whole four-page document. The second item is to enhance the Economic Development Committee. That's the committee that we would hope would address all of these growth opportunities that we've spoken about, and specifically, land use and infrastructure would be the two areas that we would expect policies and procedures to be strengthened, reviewed, enhanced, whatever's necessary, recognizing that the only way to sustainably increase the town's tax revenue, as Tom went through, without additional overrides, is to maximize this new growth. So the idea is that this override helps us in the immediate future, while simultaneous with that, these new growth opportunities are really aggressively and appropriately explored, of course, coming to the town for vote as anything would be. Easton will enhance, embrace pro-growth opportunities and practices to promote to promote economic and housing development in order to sustainably grow the tax base to support quality public services. What continued to come up in our committee was a project such as Avalon, our largest taxpayer, um, and to make sure that we're embracing those where appropriate when they come up in front of the town. So we've said that there might be a reform of the Economic Development Committee in order to bolster these efforts. Um, that committee should include seats from key land use and regulatory boards to help move that agenda forward, and that we would ask that they evaluate existing policies and identify areas for improvement. The next two items are on this slide. Um, as Tom spoke about, we really recognize the human impact, particularly to our seniors, to our veterans, to those on any, um, income-challenging situations, that we would continue the educational efforts to, um, make sure that they're aware of all of the things that the town offers, um, through Health and Community Services, through town information, um, to provide initiatives that are already available on, um, programs that are aimed at reducing financial burdens for seniors, for our veterans, and for individuals with disabilities. And further, we would ask for the expansion of those financial relief programs, so the town will explore opportunities to expand those relief programs for vulnerable populations. And, um, you'll see the slides from prior presentations. For example, the Blanche James presentation, where there was an entire page of opportunities that are available to these populations. Some very unique to Easton, some actually championed by Easton initially. So we are proud of that, but we need to see that continue for our residents. And then, budget efficiencies and annual caps. This is where we're really asking for fiscal, continued fiscal responsibility, um, a budget cap of a rolling two-year average not to exceed four percent growth. That is going to be incredibly challenging for the town and school side. We understand that, but we're asking for efforts in that. Um, if available, uh, if the revenues are insufficient to meet that, then we would expect the town to allocate the funds equitably between the town and schools, um, based on a percentage basis, and, uh, ensure that they receive an appropriate share of the available resources. Exceptions will be for mandated services. Should a department need to budget in excess of this cap to meet a mandatory, um, requirement, they would be required to provide a mitigation plan. So by the third quarter of the fiscal year, outline and explain how they would expect to offset that cost of those mandates in the following year. Um, again, those are rigorous, those are difficult. We've talked about insurance, uh, inflation. We've talked about special education and outsourcing of, of, um, student experiences that are very, very costly, um, and transportation. So there are so many things that are beyond our control and constantly require leaders of the departments of the school and the town side to make these difficult choices. And number five goes back to the protection of our financial reserves and shielding our bond rating. The committee recognizes the importance of being very, very strategic, following the plans that are already in place in regard to fiscal responsibility, but really even being tighter on those. So for example, cash, free cash reserves. No free cash would be used during the full year twenty twenty-six budget should an operating override, um, be passed. And finally, in twenty twenty-seven, we would limit free cash usage to only fifteen percent. Again, a very small and difficult number. And then, in subsequent years, following the, um, policies that are already in place to show that fiscal responsibility. Connor already talked about the health insurance and the OPEB liabilities. Town addressing the unprecedented inflationary growth costs of these by assessing premium contributions, um, and being sure where possible to potentially reduce long-term unfunded liability. Capital asset funding, we know that that continues to be a problem, but basically to ensure that we will prioritize the use of free cash to support those capital needs, new police vehicles, school technology, and build a stabilization fund rather than using this free cash for operating expenses, which sometimes has to happen over, um, years in the past. And finally, an opportunity to measure the accountability and the way that departments are achieving this. We would ask for an annual measurement of the compact's progress, and that that would come each year as the town and school departments include in their budget proposal a narrative that outlines and explains their ability, hopefully, to advance these or meet these, or if they fall short of the goals in this compact, um, what is the reason for that? So, that's, um, that's really it. We, you know, we've attached the whole document here, which we'll have online available to folks, and hope to have the three signatory boards, um, you know, in the very near future, sign on to this and commit to this. And again, those boards would be the select board, the school committee, and the finance committee. Um, this has already been adopted by the PACE committee.
In closing, um, the, the good news is that this is not just a full baton passing. And what I mean by that is, we are imploring you and asking you to now engage as aggressively as you can, uh, to make sure that the residents of our community have a chance to learn. Uh, there continues to be a tremendous amount of misinformation out in the world. Uh, that happens, uh, and every day, we meet new people who have the benefit of learning information. And we often find that the first time around, there's reticence, and the second time around, there's curiosity. And once we get to that curiosity, people can understand the gravity of the challenge we face. Um, so I ask you all, uh, you know, we, we now know that the Warren article is in your hands. Uh, you folks have a responsibility to engage in the community and create dialogue. By way of understanding, uh, we're not leaving. We care too much about this. We'll make ourselves available for the, the scheduled meetings you have with the finance committee and the, the joint meetings with the select board. Um, we are, uh, continuing to potentially explore another open house. I think we are looking to do that as well, which hopefully will help you all. Um, and just to give you an understanding of the efforts, credit to the team. Uh, January eighth was an open house at Quesett House. February twenty-sixth was an open house at Blanche James. Three, three was an open house at Town Hall. Three, four was a finance committee meeting update. Three, five was an info session at Ames Library. Three, six was Q and A via Zoom, so we held open Zoom. Uh, we did coffee, uh, with Nancy and I for three Fridays in a row, three, seven, fourteen, and twenty-one, and another library session on the eighth. That doesn't include the fact that we were at numerous school events. We were at, on the news. So again, Nancy, thank you for doing that.
Denise.
Uh, Denise, sorry. And thank you so much, uh, for going to the senior centers as well, Chris. Um, so, again, just, we, we have done a lot. The team, credit to them, has done so much to create awareness. Not gonna lie, we said this, we're getting tired. We've been at this for a lot of months. We're still here for you, but we need you. We asked the finance committee at our last presentation to do the same. Please, engage. Uh, if you believe in it, and passionately, I hope that you do, then we really need you to, to get out there loud and proud. Um, at some point, maybe there'll be door knocking. There'll be that level of engagement. If there are great opportunities for us to come and visit a lot of people with you, let us know, we're happy to do that. We recognize we're the subject matter experts, having done this so much. Uh, but we need you to become that, because we need you to talk as knowledgeably as we do with all the people you come in touch with. So, we're happy to chat and talk about questions or take feedback. And I know you have Connor's presentation as well to apply that. But we're happy to sit here and stay with you and be quiet until you need us, which I know is odd for me, Dottie, I know.
So Jamie's probably wanting to move seats for future meetings, because I always go to him first, but...
Now, I will say this, the community pledge portion of this, just as you mentioned along this whole process, there's no smoking gun, there's no fingers to point to. We've operated as a community, both on the school side, the town side, extremely efficiently. And we continue to do more with less than having done that. When we look at our comparable communities, uh, we look at the state in general, right? We're way, way, way under budget per pupil for services that are rendered to a community of almost twenty-six thousand. So, he- here's what I want to say about this pledge. It's for all those people that we're trying to bring along with us, and we're trying to say, hey, look, there's a body of work that you probably didn't have time to see what's been happening for the last ten months. And now, as we're in the final push, and we are down to, you know, zero hour really being May nineteenth, when we get to town meeting. And then, if we're, you know, then the next step being the ballot measure. So, while I, what I see in that community pledge is, is not, again, fault, we need to make sure, we're not pointing fingers at anyone about anything. This is really another tool that you, as a committee, think that we can put in our toolbox to try to bring folks along to understand how important this is, that we are... I've heard Craig say it many times, we are at a, a cliff, we're at a financial cliff. And so we're, we're asking everybody, and begging, quite frankly, in the form of this committee pledge. Because this, this is not where we, you know, should be with this conversation if everybody was privy to the information and the thousands of pages and the hundreds of hours that you all had put in, and that group of nineteen. And there's a lot of people here tonight that are on that group, uh, who have done way more than my bandwidth would allow. And so I'm only up to speed, as Tom mentioned, because I've been able to reach out, talk to you personally. Um, and I agree, it is our charge to now be advocates as well and know this information as well as you folks do, and it's all out there. You know, you can spend a little bit of time reaching out, talking to any one of us now, gather that information, it's all online. But that, that's how I feel. I think we need to really explain this community pledge, because I think it can look like we're, we're, we are begging, right? For people to come along with us on this ride and say, here's what we're even willing to do. Go one step further and do this as a, you know, as a community.
Thank you, I think that's very well said. I think it's a very good explanation of this, Jamie. Another tool that hopefully lets people know that they can have some confidence in this process, and it's, it is not about finger pointing. It is literally just another assurance that this work is constantly being done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was actually gonna say something very similar, but you are far more eloquent than I am. I will just say that I, when I was listening to the presentation on this, my brain went to, this is a blueprint. There's a lot of opportunities in here for people to actually actively plug in on committees, to come to meetings when we're having a discussion on any of these topics, and say, I have an idea. Not on social media, where it gets lost in the course of Thousand Voices, but through avenues that actually can be acted upon. Uh, in a timely manner, too. And it's also the path for us not to be in a situation where we have to come back in a couple of years and say, we need to do this again. You know, and I think that's a concern I've seen and heard out there in the world is, what happens in five years again? And this is the path to making sure that we set ourselves aside not to happen. As you said before, we've made it nineteen years to this point, that that would happen in an operational override, that is extraordinary. Um, and it's not because we, we made a lot of painful decisions along the way that forced us to compromise on values at other points in time. I, I really think this is a path for helping us, again, our choices will have to be made. We'll have to come up with those trade-offs, but it's a really strong, strong support, so.
Thank you, good comments.
And Jen, you hit on something that has come up, um, and I'll promise I'll be brief. But, you know, the, the, recently, just today, I believe it was announced that the Boston Public Schools are concerned that a hundred million dollars worth of federal financing will be cut. Um, and I actually received a call over the weekend from a resident who was concerned that, how, how, how can you tell us that you're planning for four and five years when there's these situations that are occurring that are beyond our control? And just so that everybody knows, we don't pretend to be able to, to know that. We do believe that the recommendation that we've put forth is the right balance for the known circumstances now. We appreciate that people understand we can't read the future, and that there are some very large impacts. The other aspect that I gave this person some comfort around is that we have a very active delegation that goes to the state that advocates and, and helps people understand the inequity of the current reimbursement formula, where largely thirty-five to thirty-six communities benefit of the formula now, and we have three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns in Massachusetts. So it's clearly broken, there starts to be some engagement, but that's been years of effort of educating and communicating. Um, but that's a very, to Connor's point, that, that's a multimillion-dollar impact of just inflation pressure versus what we used to get. So, to your point, we, we don't pretend to know the future, um, but we have done the best with all the information at hand, and we are thankful we have leaders who continue to engage to find opportunities in the years to come that will help us overcome the challenges that come our way. To your point, they've done it for nineteen years, um, which is pretty impressive.
Um, so, uh, you know, the, the outcome in work, all of your effort advocates, uh, an override, seven point three million dollars. Uh, because I have a family member, mini-family member, who is an employee of the town. I have to accuse myself from any discussion or vote, uh, on anything override.
Sure.
That doesn't mean to say I can't speak, uh, that's as a member of this board. Individually, I can share my opinions, but as I sit here before you tonight, I cannot.
Appreciate that.
Thanks, Mark. Craig?
Number one, I wanted to, once again, thank Tom and Nancy for the work that you have done since last summer. It's extraordinary. Um, in, in my conversations with a lot of people in the community, there was a lot of misunderstanding about who was on the committee, um, and the fact that everybody on that committee is a taxpayer, lives in the town. Many of them, many of the people on this committee, uh, were not on any other boards or committees. They just wanted to be part of looking at what we're doing and what the, what the potential, um, solutions might be. I know some members of that committee came on being a little bit suspicious, and they turned it, you guys turned it around by pointing out what, what's really going on. Um, I, I think that that's, that's an extraordinary, it speaks of the extraordinary work that you guys have done, to be able to, to provide that information, to gather that information, so that folks understand on that committee that this is, there's no smoke and mirrors here. I, I think the thing you said, Tom, about this town is not overspent. Absolutely not. And if anybody is willing to look at your material, they will see that. They will also see where we stand in, in comparison with every other city and town around here. You talk about the, the fact that minimum aid. There's two hundred and ten cities and towns now that are considered minimum aid communities. Thirty dollars per student is, is, is nothing with a fifty million dollar school budget.
Mm-hmm.
The fact that we're, that we're cutting police and fire and, and slowing down responses, potentially slowing down response time, is, is scary for the people in this community.
Mm-hmm.
It's also speaks about what kind of community do we want? Now, I, I very much appreciate the fact that you talked about the fact that there are a lot of people in this town that just honestly cannot pay for increases. We've already done it with the school, police, fire, DPW, and now we're asking for an operational override. And Mark and I have talked about this for years now. Um, you and Mark were the ones who came up with the taxation aid committee suggestion, which we used ARPA money to help hundreds of families in this town. Um, and I think that they, what's important is that there are a lot of activities that, that we talked about that, um, addressed those kinds of issues with folks in this town. And so, a lot of people that I talked to didn't realize that. They didn't know that. They didn't know about the taxation aid committee. They didn't know about the circuit breaker. They didn't know about those kinds of activities that, that the workaround that we, that we provide through Health and Community Services. They didn't know about those things. Unfortunately, we don't have a radio station, we don't have a newspaper, so we use the town crowd, we use, we talk and talk and talk, um, but we can't reach twenty-six thousand people. It's, it's a hard, it's a hard thing to do. Um, and I appreciate the fact that you've been out there in the community trying to do that, as we all have.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think that, that, um, I, I'm a little concerned about, about some aspects of the compact, but, but I'm willing to have a discussion, a serious discussion about that. Um, a- and it makes me a little bit nervous when you make sort of those commitments, and you put the, the dollar figures on it, or the percentages on it, um, and then you say, well, what, what if, the what-ifs, um, and how that works. Um, but I'm gonna continue to be out there, talking to people as much as I possibly can, calling people, emailing people about, to go on to PACE, the PACE committee. I've already had an email exchange or text exchange with Tom, that I've had some neighbors that, that, you know, who were interested in possibly having a conversation over coffee. I said, I'd be happy to see if I can get Tom or Nancy to come and, and talk about that as well.
Would be happy to.
But I, I think that the overriding thing for me is the job that you guys have done over the last eight, nine months is extraordinary. And, and the fact that some people are, are using social media to pick away at it, it means they haven't really spent the time learning about what you, what you have done and where we are standing. And I hate to say it, but we are on that, heading on that cliff, um, that fiscal cliff. It scares the hell out of me, but, you know, I think the work you've done puts us in a fairly, very good position to be able to say, these are the alternatives. Make it, folks, what kind of town do you want? And what can we do to help people who can't pay the taxes? So, thank you very much, I think I've taken enough time, but thank you very much.
Appreciate that. And we'll share the thanks. It's truly, if, if we did a good job, it's because the team helped us do a good job. They challenged us, they really are a cross-section of our community. Um, I would be remiss of, also, if I didn't give a plug to Joe and ECAT. Uh, Joe specifically has been with us for five-hour marathons for many of our meetings, and ECAT has been incredibly helpful. ECAT has been incredibly helpful with filming us, interviewing us, getting the message out. So we might not have a radio station, and I agree, we could take one, we got ECAT and they're pretty mighty, and we're going to keep working them, but thank you. And yeah, we appreciate the support and the team effort.
Excellent. Anybody from the audience have any comments, questions? I don't want to call on anyone, but I just want to make sure everyone knows they have the opportunity. How are we doing online for questions?
There are a couple in here as well. They don't have a name and address, but I can, I can read them. If the budget deficit is $2 million, why is the override $7 million?
That's a great question.
Can I take that?
Yep.
Sure, so thank you to whomever asked that, it's a good question. The deficit has been reduced to 2.2 million through substantial cuts to town staff and through the application of one-time reserve money. When you look at that now, that's a reflection of months of public process, and you can go back and pull up the budgets, the first issue of a budget for fiscal '26 had a preliminary deficit of 6.36 million. That already included the application of 1.1 million in reserves, so the real shortfall out of the gate, and this is public, is about seven and a half million. So the 7.3 million is actually less than that. You may ask, okay, but the number is shrinking, and that's true, and sometimes folks who tune in periodically but don't kind of obsessively watch public finance meetings, which I understand and sympathize, say, okay, well, they're finding the money, right? They do this every year, they say there's a gap, and then it's fine, there's obviously no problems here, but you, we, unlike the federal government, cannot deficit spend for operations, we have to balance a budget every single year. And we do that through reducing the expense requests that come from our departments on the town and school side, and through updating our revenue forecast, because when we're doing an early budget around holidays, we only have usually two quarters of year-to-date actual collections for certain things like excise tax, meals tax revenue. We don't have the governor's budget proposal for the coming fiscal year, that has a huge impact. We don't have things like our healthcare premiums until late February. So it's a, it's a living document, and I think sometimes it could lead to some cynicism or frustration because it changes, but it changes because unlike a private entity, we publish all of our work in real time as it's happening, so that you as voters can look at that and follow that and ask exactly this type of question. So the answer to, well, the deficit is 2.2 million, why do we need more, why does PACE recommend more, is the deficit is much, much larger than 2.2 million if the goal is to sustain the amount of service we currently provide to the community. Ultimately, it will be voters' choice how that deficit is solved, and it will be largely one of two ways, and voters will have the final choice. This isn't something that I can decree from town hall, or the select board can implement by vote. We have a seven and a half, or the accounting budget has seven and a half million shortfall of a recommendation for PACE, 7.3. That will be addressed, and we will balance the budget with a budget that does so through multiple millions in cuts to town and school operations and dozens of jobs being eliminated and a significant impact to services, some of which I discussed tonight, some of which the superintendent will discuss April 3rd, and the application of reserve funds, which can weaken our bond rating and increase what we pay for interest on all of our capital projects in the future, which only further put pressure on our operating budget. That is one option. And the alternative is to address that shortfall through revenue, which regrettably, due to state law and a whole host of other reasons, PACE has exhaustively documented, for something of that scale, the choice would be an operating override. So that's why there's a difference between those, and that's why as we reach May, you will see a budget with zero deficit, because it will have zero deficit from an accounting standpoint, but that will have been solved through millions of cuts to town and school services. And if that is what voters think is preferable, the two admittedly hard choices, that will be their choice.
I can just add on to that, to make it real, I think, for users, we're basically displaying our values and policies, we have to cut to zero, we'll have one ambulance at times, and not two. We'll rely on mutual aid more, which is risky, and it adds time to response. We'll have higher amount of children per teacher, because we'll have less teachers. So it's getting real for people who are saying, like, why is it going down? That's real. There'll be nobody to take your payment at the window for your water bill, which that position, part of it has been reduced, so you can't just go in and pay your bill at town hall now, you have to come at certain times. You won't be able to go to the town swimming pool, perhaps. Those are all things that we, we believe makes Easton inimitable, creating a safe dynamic where kids have access to a town pool and other items. So for the person who asks that, just know, we are, to Connor's point, going to balance it, you will lose all those things that we're talking about and more to come. Less crime will be solved, there'll be less detectives. And I know I'm just saying things that were already said, but as a resident, like, if anybody wants to talk about those things, I can rattle off that list and make it real for you.
If we knew this was coming, why did we invest in building projects? This is actually a two-part question. And why not instead have a series of smaller overrides instead of a larger tax bill?
Well, we've tried to have smaller overrides before, and that failed. And this was unprecedented expense growth that we did not know was coming. And I know that that ties back into the municipal buildings, and what I would say, the way that I think of it myself is, if I need a new roof, and because my roof is failing, my walls are getting wet, my windows are failing, it's causing all kinds of problems in my house, I'm going to take out a loan and I'm going to get the roof, probably the new furnace, all the things that are costing me money now. Now, fast forward a few years later, and we have these huge increases in utility bills and so forth, it's going to cost me more money, but that doesn't mean I shouldn't have put the roof on when I did, because if I wait five more years, it's going to cost me three times as much money. So one really doesn't connect with the other. Now, that's not to say that, you know, you're still going to have to come up with the money, so we still understand that. We're all taxpayers on this board, you know, everybody that's worked on this, we feel the same, the same struggle and the same pain. We are trying to figure out ways that we can do this. I'm hearing from people that are saying, why can't you do an override that's like half as much money that you're asking for now, because we're afraid it won't pass? The reason for that is because this group was charged with providing a sustainable, looking five years forward, how can we make it sustainable? Just doing a smaller override, we would still have major cuts. And then we have other people saying, well, why aren't you doing more? Because all you're doing now is really just trying to keep level services, why don't we go to 10 million? We just don't feel that people can absorb that. You know, if it was a perfect world and you were just looking at it financially, that would be the way to do it, is to do it for more than you need, put some of that away so that you're not dipping into it. That commitment that we're going to be making to the public, that is going to be a struggle to keep to that commitment, especially if the costs are increasing at 30% a year, like you see on there, costs that we can't control. But something that we have been doing, you know, we've talked a lot about the tax relief programs that we have. At the Blanche Ames School, somebody said, you know, I'm concerned about my older neighbors, how can we help? You can, people can donate to that, if they're concerned about their neighbors, it's a great thing to do, donate to that account. People can help in other ways if they have the means to be able to do that. You know, I would just, I would just say that these questions are great, we'd be really happy to dig into them, we talk about them at every single meeting, there's all kinds of reporting online, it's so transparent, you can look up the budget online, everything's there, every budget memo that we have is on the PACE website. Connor gives us these budget memos that trim each time, you can read each one of them, read the first one and see where we were, you know, a few months ago, where are we now? They're pretty concise and easy to read. I'm not saying that people shouldn't ask questions of us, we wish people asked more questions of us, but that's, you know, in a nutshell, that's why we're proposing, you know, the PACE Committee is proposing the number that it is. We feel that it's achievable, and it will, it will help us mitigate it. Also, I just want to mention that along the lines, some of the things that we've done that we really didn't talk about tonight is, the way we've been able to close the gap every year, because we do have a gap every year, we've been talking about this for years, that it's going to catch up to us at some point, we're kicking the can down the road. We are always, you know, tweaking the staff, you know, we are so under, you heard Joe say it earlier, when the community's, when he was getting his presentation, we are so understaffed compared to what communities our sides are. And that's not good, and it's not healthy, it's not healthy for our employees, it's not good for, you know, anything could happen with errors, you know, you cut things so lean like that, it could be really a problem for us. It's not safe for our first responders or our community to dip down into these levels, I'm totally against that. But we've also been looking for ways to find revenues, and we've done that in big ways that have impacted the municipality, but also people's individual pocketbooks. With the municipal aggregation, that's saved millions and hundreds of dollars. I would, I think that we said, for the amount of money that the Blanche Ames ended up on our tax bill, the average resident should have saved that much money in their municipal aggregation.
Since the town began bulk purchasing energy supply for the community in 2020, the average house in Easton has avoided $1,800 in cost compared to the market. And Blanche Ames, which was approved in 2017 and 19, it was initially approved by voters, and I, you know, to build on that question that this resident asked, you know, when the override, operating override, which was smaller in 2016 failed, that did not come with it a referendum from voters or successive voters at town meeting to cease all capital projects. And each one of the debt exclusions had to be approved by voters three separate times after literally hundreds of public meetings and years of feasibility, going through exactly these questions of what's the cost of waiting, what's the cost of attempting a repair or phasing, and these were the most cost-effective ways that we could proceed. After that override failed, we adopted much more conservative operating budgets that grew often below 3% per year. We substantially built our.
Is your, is your mic on?
Yes. We, okay, this is like, clearly we're not spending all of our money on tech in the world, that's not a, in the ECAT, we're all trying to make these things work. So those projects went through numerous years of financial analysis before getting to voters for approval. Along the way, voters adopted additional financial assistance programs because we recognize that they have large impacts on people's taxes. The Blanche Ames project, at time of approval, we estimated would be a $435 increase in taxes per year, that was not delayed when the pandemic hit, and we brought it in 13 million under budget, and that's closer to $285 per year for that building. That's not to say that's not significant, but right now, it is common for cities and towns in Massachusetts who are looking at new schools, looking at tax increases of over $1,000 a year for one school. And so we've worked hard on that, we try to deliver as much value as possible for our residents because we don't take lightly or for granted those impacts. But on the other side of it, we've done other programs like Dottie alluded to, like, doing things like buying energy supply for the entire community. Some of that was good timing, that I'm certainly not trying to take credit for, we locked in pricing in 2020 at 10 cents per kilowatt hour, market rates exploded shortly after that, but that has shielded people from hundreds of dollars per year of energy costs. So we've been really trying to be thoughtful, recognizing that both things can be true, we can be running a very lean operating budget and your tax bill can be high, and both things are true, and they're very frustrating that they're both true. But as Tom and Nancy have talked about, there are known, documented, verified, third-party verified reasons for this. You know, all of our books are public, we're subject to audit annually, you know, a third of our land is tax exempt or minimally taxable, that's part of what makes Easton a beautiful place, but proportionally, that raises the tax burden on the other two-thirds, which is overwhelmingly residential. So I hope that's helpful, but yes, Dottie, that the energy aggregation is saving a substantial amount, and we're still in that program now, and the rates are not as advantageous as they once were, but they are still better than market, and we're going to keep trying to find ways, not just for targeted financial relief, but also for broad-based economic relief for our community as we move forward.
And could I just add a timeline comparison, because I think most people don't appreciate the one slide you had up, that the capital project, especially the public safety, actually had its genesis in 2013, and there were multiple years of engagement since. And also, the override started in 2016, we did an operational audit in 2017 to make sure it wasn't the expense side. In 2020, the budget subcommittee was literally recommending an override on March 12th, I think, was our last meeting, and we all know that the world shut down on March 17th. But it doesn't make it easier for somebody who's just arriving now to this, so I just want to acknowledge that, that it is still a surprise for these people who are learning it, but I hope that they can take heart that we haven't just started this and we didn't time it to happen this way. It is ironic, the last time we had an operational override, it came the year after a debt exclusion override. So timing happens, you can't control when your roof gets the leak and cable bill goes up, that doesn't make it okay, it doesn't make it easier. But I just want people to know, like, we didn't time this, this is, this is a series of events that we've been talking about for years, and regrettably, they have come together. And I don't think we did anything wrong, in any way, shape, or form. The capital investments we've made have absolutely set up our community. I know we're in our tricentennial, but the investments we are making, which are the right ones, are setting it up for the next 100 years. And every so often, people have to assume that responsibility and do it, and I give credit to our residents, especially on the capital side, for doing that, that's, that's a big ask. I think it also, there's a strong correlation for the people out there, to know that those communities that invest in their capital infrastructure or via overrides, that they also have the largest growth of their home values, that is a fact, that is. So, you know, thankfully, we have invested wisely as Easton residents, and our home values have gone up materially, and we have the second highest amongst all of our surrounding communities. So, you know, for me, I would trust the town of Easton over Intel stock, I can tell you that all day long, because I have gotten a better return on my home over the last five years than I have in the stock market, arguably.
Sean, how are we doing on questions?
One last one, what is, can you explain the breakdown of the $7 million override and the .8 million, yeah, .8 million, 800,000 expense cut, is that available anywhere?
Understood. So I think it will, if you don't mind, I'll dive in. So you will know where the expense cut happens, because our town administrator and school superintendent have to put forth a budget that balances, that's our town charter. So you will know the cuts first, so you're hearing some of them, whether it's police, fire personnel, town pool potentially, you're going to, on April 3rd, hear an awful lot on the school side, which is 50% of our operating spend or 65% of our total spend, it's the biggest chunk, is the takeaway. So go, April 3rd, and you'll hear the impact. And the reason why I say it, by knowing what's being taken away, you've already heard what will be added back first, which is one, to make sure we don't use our stabilization funds. So if you have 7.3 million of an override, roughly 2.496, if I remember correctly.
Free cash, 3.5.
Right, so would be used to not use our savings account, which is a good thing to preserve stabilization. I hope the Department of Education conversation that's being held at a national level doesn't result in a negative impact, especially to New England, doesn't operate on a county basis, we have our town basis. So I'm just concerned that, you know, we can't be using our stabilization and free cash. The rest of it, I think I can tell you, we'll probably be adding back very crucial identified programs and services, which usually entail people, given how much people expense is a big part of our budget. But, so beginning now and April 3rd, you're learning what's being taken away, which is a great indicator for where it would come back to. And you already know the biggest chunk is just so that we don't deplete our stabilization reserves materially. You guys want to add?
Yeah, by April, the charter requires that the budget proposal have a hearing before town meeting, so there will be a public hearing on April 29th. So we will, we'll have to have the two, both budgets available, the balanced budget through primarily cuts and reserves and the override contingent budget by April 29th.
Yeah. And an operational override requires you to learn what is being added back, like, you will see that, it has to be presented, so you'll know where it is. The PACE Committee did not get into individual recommendations, the number is an average recommendation from all of our people, but we really believe, through our engagement with Connor and with Dr. Cabral, that they know best about their budgets, and we would look to them to provide that type of guidance. They're going to give you the hard guidance about where the cuts will come from, candidly.
I would just say, you know, the PACE Committee under your leadership has been very thoughtful about the impact to people, you know, people whose jobs this impacts. We're talking about people, we're talking about our neighbors, our friends, our family, this is not something that. This is not something that anybody takes lightly. Nobody on the PACE committee, and when, in the makeup of the PACE committee, you know, there's residents, there's union members, there's people on the school and town side that have the experience in budgets. Not one person there has said, you're misspending the money, you're reckless with the money. Everybody has come to the same conclusion together, from wherever we started, wherever the perspective was. And I think it's important to mention that. So when we're talking about, you know, these cuts, I don't want to talk about them in a cavalier way that it's just a number and a cut. We're talking about people and that is very impactful to us and our values in the community. It's not something that is easy for anybody to do. So when, you know, we're saying, well, what are all the cuts? We don't know them yet because we're still waiting for all the numbers to come in, but they're being thoughtfully, thoughtfully done and presented and presented in a way, the best of the worst news that we're going to have to be able to do. And, you know, just to kind of go over the process again, there'll be two budgets at town meeting. There'll be the live within your means budget that's going to have the cuts. And then there'll be the override budget if you want to sustain the services. And people have to vote their conscience or their ability to pay. It's the town, you know, I keep seeing and hearing people saying, you know, they're doing this, they're doing that, talking about the boards and committees. The, the people, the voters of this town vote every year on the budget. They vote for these things. We put forward, we do the research and the due diligence and we put forward what we think is the best solution. But at the end of the day, we're not authorized to spend money. Town meeting makes that happen. So that's why it's so important for the community to understand that and to, to keep asking questions, to go to things. If we knew that we could have 100 people show up or something, we'll schedule something, you know? Or if you've got 30 people in your civic organization and you want somebody to come and speak, let us know because it's really that important that, that we do this. And I just, I think that the conversations that the PACE committee has had have been very honest and, and very deliberate and very thoughtful. We've had some really, you know, great conversations and, and hashed things out. So I hope that people at least think about that a little bit. And I, I really am appreciative of the members of the community that, that do reach out and have attended and do care. That's not, it doesn't mean that we're going to love the outcome either way, but we're just doing our best to give the best solution that we think people, people will give them a choice.
Yeah. If people vote in an informed way, understanding the consequences, I, I think we've done our job. You know, again, I, I don't think you can be angry at any side or any solution or any vote in the sense, would be disappointed. But I really do think if people can be educated and informed, that hopefully we'll come to the, the right place.
Anything else? Anybody, other comments now?
I probably could say a lot more, but I, I think I used up my time.
So, so Dottie, on the board's agenda that you and I have put on, is for the board to consider and potentially adopt the override pledge. That's going, it's in front of you now. It'll be in front of the finance committee Wednesday night and I believe the school committee Thursday night. This has been worked on by PACE for some time. There's obviously representatives of each of your boards on this. Craig, you alluded to it, I'm, I'm sure me and Tom and Nancy and Dottie and all the PACE folks, we're happy to get into it. You, there are some hard commitments in here that will challenge us as community leaders to make this work. But one of the things that is on your docket is to consider adopting this. And then the, the last thing related to this item is, and I don't know if we still have the town clerk, Danielle Siccard, available by Zoom. In, in the process, one of the things folks have repeatedly asked, like, okay, well, what are the dates we need to know? And we know that Representative Dougherty tragically passed away. The state has now scheduled an election for Tuesday, June 10th. So that election is happening no matter what this board decides with an override election. There's a recommendation in your packet. There will be a primary for that in May. You have your town election in April, a primary for that state seat in May, a town meeting in May, and now an election on June 10th. And so, you know, Danielle and I took a look at that and one option the board has is to just have a dual election on that day that would cut down on cost of running multiple elections back to back to back to back. Could hopefully cut down on voter confusion because there's going to be a lot of election opportunities for folks. And these are important decisions. We, we certainly don't want folks to, to feel some uncertainty, but that's ultimately the board's call. So I see that Danielle's moved on screen. We could perhaps skip the compact Tom and Nancy. If you'll stick around for five minutes while the board talks about the date, but ultimately, Dottie, that's your choice.
Sure. Hi Danielle, thanks for being here.
Hi. Glad to be here.
So we're looking at June 10th as the state election for the state rep seat. And our, our conversation is around, do we want to have the override election on that same day? So I, I think that aside from the fact of, you know, the cost and the confusion, when we look at, you know, the amount of days that we have to have, 35 days before we can declare a ballot vote, you know, June 10th is a little bit later than I would have loved to have it. But if can't, I don't, I don't think it can be later than that. People are going to be off on, you know, end of year, schools getting out, vacations. There's a lot of stuff happening in those weeks. I think it makes sense to have it on the 10th. That is a Tuesday, I believe. So it, you know, it would coincide with what we're mandated to do for the state as well. And I don't know if the other board members have any strong feelings one way or another.
Personally, I think, I, I've had this conversation with Danielle and that in the interest of, of timing and workload for the clerk's office, it makes sense to me to piggyback on the June 10th date. People are going to be aware of that election, at least in 4A, 5 and 6. And it's easier to get that information out to people. And people can put that in their calendars and, and make every effort to be there. There's going to be, I believe you can vote early and you can vote, correct Danielle? You can vote early and you also can vote by mail? So if you have schedules and things, is that correct?
Partly. So clearly deciding a date as soon as possible will help with reducing voter confusion. Will also help my office to the ability to put together marketing materials, voter option guides and the like. Vote by mail is automatic and will be required as part of all of the elections that are in the memo that I provided to you. Early voting in person is not permitted for the special state primary or for the special state election, but there is an option for local elections to provide for early voting in person. First, that requires a vote of the board of registrars to make a recommendation of such to the select board and then for the select board to vote. I have scheduled a board of registrar meeting for next week in anticipation of our discussion from tonight. And hopefully we can also act quickly on a recommendation so that again, we can get a calendar out there to the community so they know what their options are.
What, what precincts does State Rep Dougherty see?
Yeah.
Say it again.
4A, 5 and 6.
Correct.
So just keep in mind that those are the only voters, you know, what do we, you know, I, I, I understand. I think there's potential for voter fatigue here for the number of times where folks are going to be going to the ballot. But that's, that's a portion of our, how many precincts now, seven?
Yeah, that's three out of eight. There's eight precincts for state elections. So we will set up for, for a 4A and a 4B for this, which is called a dual election. It, it will require folks and voters in 4A, 5 and 6 to have the ability to check in for both of those elections, vote both of their ballots, should they choose to do that, and deposit both of those ballots into the tabulators. So that definitely does reduce the confusion for them.
I'll ask one more, just final thought here is, if the June 10th date hadn't come up, because it wasn't on the board here until the state announced this, what, last week?
Couple of weeks ago.
Couple of weeks ago. So would we, had it not been announced, would we have been seeking a date that soon after town meeting? Or would we have?
So I, obviously I can't speak for the board, but what I would recommend is yes, because particularly for the schools, and I won't put the superintendent on the spot, but the schools have certain contractual obligations regarding to notice of layoff. And the longer those are out until these decisions are made and there's stability, the more risk of attrition of folks finding a, a job somewhere else. They're not coming back even if an override passes. We have traditionally always used a cadence of, because you need both votes, right? A town meeting and a ballot, that you would have a town meeting and a ballot within a couple of weeks after. But certainly no later than June because it's for fiscal year starting in July.
What's the last day of school? Okay, I'm just curious too, because June 10th obviously following a Tuesday school day.
So this is before school's out for summer, before some folks' vacation may begin. It's really packed before this. You have, if you were looking at weekends, had this not been scheduled, you have the high school graduation day, you have Flag Day, Memorial Day. So it, it's a tough spot, so.
I think the only other day that like would have potentially been available is May 31st.
Right.
And you talk about fatigue for the voters to go to another, I, I, I wouldn't add another date. I'd say let's do what we got and, and, you know.
Jamie, I don't know if that helped answer your question, but this was the ballpark.
I appreciate it.
Danielle had a question.
I was just going to say that I have had some preliminary conversations with the principal at Oliver Ames High School relative to a dual election. Either way, they're going to be impacted because we are going to have one of the gyms for the, the special state general election on that date either way. But that is finals week. And so she felt that it actually felt on a good timeframe as far as parking and the other things that we would be concerned for voter access.
Great. Jen?
I feel like the fiscally responsible community, I know it's pretty hard in the clerk's office and that also has a big cost, so it's a costly perspective. I think it's just really important that we're going to have to do a lot of good outreach and advertising to make sure people are aware of what, what has happened that day and how it works from a standpoint of if you're part of the state election versus override, so.
All right.
And that's, I would ask that the, the date be set well before the 35 days prior, where you have to provide me with the, the language for that exact reason.
Right. Danielle has legal counsel on exactly that point, that Jen, we agree with you and we want, you know, we're, it's not for us to tell people how to vote, but we want people to know they can vote and when and how. And so that's what we prepared a motion that we vetted with legal counsel, that you could schedule the election now. But obviously because we haven't even, we haven't balanced the budget yet, you, you don't have an override. You don't have the exact language of a ballot yet. You can vote to schedule it today so that everyone knows what the dates are and they can make their plans. And then as we go through balancing the budget and building the override contingency, as long as it's 35 days before June 10th, the board can vote to formalize the ballot.
Mark, did you have something you wanted?
No, I have to recuse myself.
So you want me to do the motion or are we comfortable with that? Okay, so I move to schedule a special town election for the purposes of voters considering an operating override question for the fiscal year 2026 to be held on Tuesday, June 10th from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the Oliver Ames High School. I further move that the select board will at a later date review, finalize and vote to adopt specific ballot language for said override prior to the statutorily required 35 day deadline.
That's Bajra and Stacy. Let's do a roll call vote.
Stebbins, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Paul Janetti, yes.
Bajra, yes.
Okay. And Lam abstained or recused, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you Danielle, thanks for joining us remotely.
Thanks Danielle.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now we go back to the possible vote to adopt the PACE 26 override community pledge. Is there any more discussion on that or?
I just need to release one member from the crowd. Birch, your riot is here and nice work on the civic side. He had a few questions, but we'll answer those at home.
Birch, I think that for your civic duty, you should request at least a free homework pass from somebody at school.
He's been as engaged as I have, so he actually requested to come tonight.
Oh, that's great.
Thank you Birch.
Bye bye, we had him at one of our coffees as well one morning, so.
Can I, can I ask, okay. Under the budget efficiencies and annual cap, can you talk to us about, or talk to me about, how did you reach that 4% figure?
Yeah, very similar to the way that the override number was obtained, that we took a poll of all of the PACE members and took an average of that and then sort of talked through it, what would make sense to be the resultant number.
The other aspect, yeah, the other aspect to keep in mind is that there is a very simple fundamental math equation at play. 72% of your income is governed by property tax increases that can go up by two and a half percent. The delta that you continue to have between two and a half percent and whatever the percentage of cost increase you're expecting simply propagates the same fundamental problem that we have. And the reality is that there are many communities in Massachusetts that every four to five years go through this discussion because they're in a very similar structural challenge location as we are in terms of revenue versus expenses. Our expenses aren't going up because we're adding a boatload of discretionary choice of people or programs or services. It's going up because of factors we can't control. So if you go much higher than 4%, candidly, it shortens your runway that you have. And if you go much more below 4%, candidly, it's unrealistic that if you look at historical cost increases over time, that you can't average below 4% and still believe that it's feasible to hold these leaders accountable to be able to manage their business.
And the other thing, the only, the only other thing that really could, you know, significantly help close that gap is new growth. And so by making some policy changes about examining, you know, a lot of things that we have from suggestions from the committee and from the public are evaluating, you know, our zoning, our, our wetlands bylaws is their opportunity. But new growth, again, that only lasts for so long too because we really do value the way our town looks and we don't want it to be a metropolis, right? So, you know, paced new growth of bringing in new businesses and, and improvements on people's properties and so forth. And I think we, you know, we have a really good strategy to get there with, especially, you know, finalizing that relationship with the city of Brockton to bring sewer to the industrial park. That's a big area of untapped economic growth right there. We, that will probably activate the Queeset Sewer area. We see the activation already in the five corners on Foundry Street. And, you know, the downtown has been pretty stable. But there's room for improvement in the downtown as well.
Yeah, and Craig, if I could just add, you know, we spent a lot of time talking about this because one of the things that PACE was doing was working with a live spreadsheet forecasting out five years. And 4% will, and we were all clear about this at the meeting, that will require, you know, reductions in the town and school budgets within a few years against what we expect are pretty reliable cost trends just for the cost of, of living with unions, with utilities. But the reality is so much of this will hinge on, if healthcare keeps going up 10% a year, we won't be able to afford 4% either. And so I think to Tom's point, it was kind of identifying, looking at what other communities have done, looking at our own growth trends, looking at a five year forecast set. Anything more than that, you know, if you have a couple bad healthcare years, I mean, you're in a, a hole in two or three years.
It does reinforce, Craig, that there is, people think that the override will just be the solution. It won't. It will buy you the runway to continue to work hard, but you have to focus on structural policy changes. You have to change posture, you have to invite industrial park growth. Like those are things that I think, again, residents don't understand, and I'm glad that I learned it over the years, that it takes five, 10, 15 years of thoughtful development to bring meaningful growth and projects online. I know they can happen fast too, so I'm not removing that, but we're not getting a Gillette Stadium, folks. Like we don't, if anybody wants to know, there's like one or two private parcels of 13 acres. Like it's just not there. And, you know, we'd love to get more people in the industrial park, so.
And these are the things that we've been doing all along. You know, in my time on the board, we've been looking at these incrementally. We talk about them, but there's, you know, unless there's some kind of a, you know, a big cause for concern, these are just things that are the way we do business. We're very concerned, this, this board and this administration, and you know this, Tom, very fiscally conservative. We look at every very fiscally conservative, we look at every dollar that is spent and try to maximize the investment and, you know, building a new school during COVID, coming in under budget, you know, investing in sewer infrastructure, these are all things that are teeing up opportunities, you know, even something that sounds as simple as online permitting, you know, we're always looking at ways to try to make it easier to do business, attract the businesses that we want, encourage property owners to invest in their own business. So, you know, that's, this isn't anything new to us, it's probably new to people that are listening because we may not talk about it enough.
Yeah.
I should say that's the biggest, you summed it up better than I did earlier with really how I feel about the compact is, it's an opportunity for everybody to look at the body of work for the last 15-plus years that has gotten us. And I'll say, you know, progressively to where we are, so this, and the work that continues to happen. So I don't want this to be anything more than, like we said, something in the voters' you know, toolbox as they go to make that decision. And Tom, you've said it eloquently, Nancy, you too, that you guys will sleep well if folks are informed and they go there, town meeting and in the ballot box, but, you know, just know the work has been being done and some of us are standing on the shoulders of those of you that have been doing this for a lot longer than we have. So, thank you.
Craig, what other questions you have? I see a whole bunch of little sticky notes in there.
Sorry, that was my question.
You're well prepared.
I wasn't opposed to 4%, I just wanted to know how you.
I understand, and to bring out, a very good question, to bring out these points, I think is very important. No, thank you Craig.
Anything else?
Oh, I'm all set now.
All right, do you want to make a motion?
So I move to accept the PACE FY 26 override community pledge.
Second.
That's Bodger and Stacy, and let's do a roll call on that as well.
Stebbins, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Paul Janetti, yes?
Bodger, yes.
And Lam recused. All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you for your support, honestly, we feel it, it fills the team's sails, it's not, not joking, showing up at our events, bringing friends, people, it means the world, honestly.
And I can't understate this, I mean, the work that you have put in as the chair and co-chair of this committee has just been extraordinary and all the members of the committee, you know, Denise, Chris was just here, Patrick, every single member of that committee has taken on a strong role and been 100% invested, showing up, doing the work, doing the homework. It's, it's really been awesome to watch and participate in.
And the team effort.
It really has, and for new people that have never been on a board or committee that just started off, I just can't even thank them enough, they'll probably never come back to town hall again, but, but no, all seriousness, I just really appreciate the level of capacity of people and, and their willingness to learn and like you said, be curious, so.
Appreciate y'all, thank you all so much.
I think we all, we'll say it again, appreciate what you guys have done.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to serve.
More to you.
Yeah.
So Dottie, you skipped over item six before.
The liquor licenses.
Yes, you, and you can adopt them as a slate if you'd like.
Sure. So, item six, we have a number of Stone Hill College liquor licenses, 320 Washington Street, I'm going to read them off and then Craig, when you make your motion, you don't have to read them all off again, you can just motion for the slate. The Women's Ice Hockey Banquet, Donahue Hall, April 13th, 2025, 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM with a storm date of April 14th. Private Birthday Party, Donahue Hall, April 19th, 2025, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM with a storm date of April 20th. Senior Student-Athlete Reception, Donahue Hall, April 28th, 2025, 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM with a storm date of April 29th. Football Beer Garden, WB Mason Stadium, there's five of these, so I'm just going to read all the dates, and they're all 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, so September 6th, September 20th, October 11th, November 1st, November 22nd, and the storm dates for those are September 7th, September 21st, October 12th, November 2nd, and November 23rd. And if I went too fast and you want to see the details, they are on our agenda and in our packet.
So I move to approve the one-day liquor licenses for Stone Hill College, 320 Washington Street, and slate.
Second.
That's Bodger and Lam, all in favor, unanimous.
Thank you, Dottie.
All right, next we have contract award DPW 2025-19, Woodard and Kern, this is for the Belmont Street Sewer Extension Design and Construction Oversight. Sorry we made you wait so long, Greg.
My pleasure. Hello again, for those of you at home, my name is Greg Swan, I'm the Deputy Director of Public Works. What you, the contract in front of you tonight is related to the MBTA Communities Catalyst Fund Grant that you approved at your last meeting. We received a grant for $300,000 to assist in development of our MBTA's expansion housing zone. This money will be used for design of a sewer from where it terminates right now around 35 Belmont Street all the way down to Bristol Drive. We'll design the whole package, we'll know everything that's going on. This is a particularly, in dealing in town on a state-owned road, it's a little bit tricky in dealing with the state. Woodard and Kern has done it before, they'll do a great job for us, again, it takes a big load off our plate having to deal with that, with, you know, being able to come up with everything that the state requires, all the changes they require. And then that will be for design services from now till the end of the year, they'll have the project delivered for $120,000 by the end of the year, by the end of the fiscal year, I should say, which is one of the requirements for the grant that came through.
By the end of this fiscal year, meaning by July?
June 30th, they will have a complete design done.
Wow.
We would have, be able to spend a lot more, we just don't have enough time to bid the project out.
Yeah.
We're going to talk to the state about moving some money around to make sure that we can use that $30,000 after the fact, but until this contract is awarded tonight, I didn't want to have that conversation with them.
Sure.
So.
I think this is great, and, you know, for the record, the MBTA Communities made a big announcement a couple of weeks ago, I think they had $8.2 million that they were putting out in these grants for MBTA Communities. A lot of them were a million dollars for big projects and we were, you know, we got money out of that too, but I think that this is congratulations to you guys for standing by this and applying, you know, applying for the grants.
This is really a perfect storm of a grant in the fact that we had a project proponent who wants to build in the area and this grant came up at the same time, squeaky table, apologies, and it's all coming together, it's, it's kind of a win-win, you know, it's, we're going to be able to provide sewer service for, you know, a Butters in this particular area and it's not going to cost us anything, the state's going to pay for, at least for the design and the construction oversight, which is a very big, it's a not insignificant cost when we're designing one of these projects. It's funny, it's, people start hearing that sewers coming to town and they start making phone calls. I got a phone call today from not this particular Butter, but one of the neighboring Butters, and they said, oh, sewer's coming, what can we do with it? And I had to explain to them, it's not, we're not there yet, but they will be able to tie into the sewer and they're already looking at ways to approve their property, to be able to buy the properties that are there and what they can do to improve it, so.
It's very exciting.
Well, we've said for a long while that that corridor, you know, even though it has sewer, it's been a little bit sluggish for taking off with attracting the new businesses and so forth, and a part of that is because you don't have the residential for the, for the foot traffic and so forth, so hopefully that will catalyze future development down there.
From everything that's going on in that particular area, I think you're going to see a lot of interest, just, this is my personal opinion, just in the amount of state interest in proving the area, the phone calls that I get on a daily basis, I think Queeset's ready to take off, kind of like what Five Corners is, it just needs that, that project
Yeah.
to make it happen.
Awesome. Anyone have any questions on the contract?
So I move to award, contract award DPW 2025-19 to Woodard and Kern, Belmont Street Sewer Extension Design and Construction Oversight, the amount of $120,000.
Second.
That's Bodger and Lam, all in favor? Unanimous, terrific. Next discussion and vote on the Esri Small Government Enterprise License Agreement for GIS software.
Sure, attached in your packet, there is a memo from DPW Director Dave Field recommending that we execute the enterprise license agreement of Esri, we currently use Esri for GIS software, they're the largest provider of it in the world, it's a cost-effective way for us to have the software and services that we need to continue to support and expand GIS. We not only use GIS for external-facing applications for folks, like looking at property values, property cards, we use it internally for workflow things, we track our stormwater systems, it's, DPW has really made great use out of it as part of our asset management and public data display, so the, we remain eligible for the lowest tiered rate of $29,593 per year, total cost of three-year agreement is $88,779, I believe Greg, this funded out of DPW's existing operations out of their expenses. It's, this agreement is November of '25 through three years, we recommend approval.
Any questions? I just want to comment that we were one of the first towns to use GIS, like when it started to become a thing, and I remember taking that vote, I didn't even know what it was, but it sounded like really important and the, the great things that, you know, that the town has done using that have, have just really been a game changer, you know, even identifying where water infrastructure is, if there's a water pipe break, things like that, you know, all the culverts, to be able to identify all of those and know when to clean them, you've really maximized the use of that.
So I'm going to go ahead and just take a couple of seconds here, Leon Scott, our GIS manager, is one of, you never see him, he's always behind the scenes on the backend of things, but without him, we wouldn't be able to do half of what we do with GIS. It is the backbone of what we do at Public Works, all of our information is there, it's then spending hours to research, to get plans, to get back to residents, get back to contractors, it's all at our fingertips. It's cutting-edge and what he does with, what he has to work with is simply amazing, I don't, I can't think of any other town that quite has the, the program that we do. It's, I'm thankful for Leon every day when I go on and I can answer questions in minutes instead of hours, and I can't begin to tell you how much time and energy and effort it saves us just from DPW, I can't imagine what it's like for everybody else for what he's able to do with this product. Simply is, it's a 21st century application being used to its full extent, and we're finding new ways to utilize it every single day.
That's awesome, great.
I just think it's another example of the positivity of this town, I just, the things that we do and how we're proactive, and I thank you for the comments about, about the employee, that's very nice. So I move to vote on the Esri Small Government Enterprise License Agreement, GIS software, the amount of $88,779, three-year period from 11/14/25 to 11/13/28.
Second.
That's Bodger and Lam, all in favor? Unanimous, terrific, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, have a wonderful night.
Thanks for being here tonight, good to see you.
My pleasure.
All right, we want to vote to authorize the town administrator to accept $75,000 of a legislative earmark for beautification and redevelopment of Swift's Park, and this was sponsored by the late Representative Carol Doherty.
Sure, thank you, Dottie, last week we were notified that Easton has received a state earmark and the fiscal '25 budget in the amount of $75,000 to assist with the project to beautify and redevelop Swift's Park, which supporters aware will be a memorial park for first responders and medical personnel who were on the front lines of not just the COVID-19 pandemic, but also the 1918 influenza pandemic, the park's current namesake, a firefighter from Easton who served him in nursing corps there. This earmark was initiated and sponsored by Rep. Doherty, and it's another reminder of all the ways Easton continues to benefit from her service and support, so I respectfully request authorization to accept that earmark with gratitude.
Terrific.
To the Doherty family, staff.
Great. Any comments, questions?
I just think it's, it's another example, as you said Connor, of her investment in this community, and I was at her swearing-in, and the number of people, her colleagues from the other side of the aisle who were there because they cared about Carol, and they respected her and they worked with her, and the fact that, that they were, they were able to accomplish some things for their, for their areas because of the work that Carol did, and it was, it was an honor for me to be there, and I was absolutely thrilled when I heard that this had gone through. And so I, I moved to authorize the town administrator to accept the $75,000 legislative earmark for beautification and redevelopment of Swift's Park, and thank you very much to the late Representative Carol Doherty.
Second.
That's Bodger and Lam, all in favor? Unanimous. Next, we have a vote to accept a donation to the Eastern Police Department. The Eastern Police Department recently received a generous donation from James and Emma Ducharme in the amount of $100. We do have a memo in our packet from Chief Boone to the Select Board requesting consideration of the gift. If approved, the chief intends to deposit the funds into the police donation account, and the recommendation is to accept the gift for their generous support of our police department, and as always, Chief Boone always sends a very thoughtful and grateful thank you to, to people that do submit donations to the police department. So, do you want to make a motion, Craig?
Shall I vote to accept the donation to the Eastern Police Department from, from James and Emma Ducharme in the amount of $100?
Second.
So that's Bodger and Lam, all in favor? Unanimous. And then the Ducharmes also donated $100 to Chief Alexander and the CERT team, the Eastern Fire Department and the Eastern Fire Department CERT team. Did I say that wrong?
They, yeah, they received the $5,000.
The Festival of Trees.
So I'm sorry, are there multiple gifts, Fire Department on the side?
Yes, there are two donations.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, sorry, Dottie, I just was, the notes confused me up, so there are two.
That's okay, yep, so in addition to, to the $100 from the Ducharme family, the Fire Department CERT team received a donation of $5,000 from the Eastern Festival of Trees, and Chief Alexander also submitted a memo asking the Select Board to consider these gifts. If approved, the chief intends to deposit both funds into the fire donation account, and, let me just see, and, and we certainly thank the Ducharme family and the Festival of Trees for their generous support of the Fire Department and the CERT team.
So I move to accept the $100 James and Emma Ducharme donation to the Eastern Fire Department and accept the $5,000 from the Eastern Festival of Trees also to the Eastern Fire Department CERT team.
Second.
That's Bodger and Lam, all in favor? Unanimous. The next one is to vote to accept a resignation of Amy Gershman at the Human Rights Committee with a term expiring June 30th, 2025. We did receive, the town clerk received resignation from Amy from the Human Rights Committee, leaving this seat with a term expiration of June 30th, 2025. Amy has been on this committee since the beginning, she is a powerhouse, she is creative, talented, she's, she's been involved, you know, like a heavy lift on every single event that they've had, and I really want to thank her, I can't say enough about her, and then her daughter joined the committee as well, and, you know, her whole family was at some of these, you know, big physical projects, like I don't know if you guys remember the, one of the years at the NRT, it was one of their first big projects where they made like that dome with, you know, yarn tied, you know, the public tied yarn to pieces and it became this giant public art piece, that, like, Amy was like doing every piece of that, it was really, it's been such a pleasure to work with her. Craig, you, you're on that committee, so.
I have nothing but terrific things to say about Amy Gershman and the work that she's done on behalf of the Human Rights Committee, she was the force behind the Pride Committee, the Pride Event at NRT, and then also again in downtown Northeastern, it's a real loss for the Human Rights Committee, and not only is Amy a terrific human being, but she's a friend and I, I want to thank her for all the things that she's done for this town, and hope that we'll drag her back in at some point.
We'll give her a little break before we stop trying to get her back. All right, Craig, so I'll take a motion in a second and then this will be a roll call vote.
Move to accept the resignation with regret of Amy Gershman from the Human Rights Committee with a term expiring June 30th, 2025.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Lam?
Stebbins, Gershman.
Stacy, Gershman.
Lam, Gershman.
Paul Janetti, Gershman?
Bodger, Gershman.
Terrific. All right, item 14, the review of the May 19th, 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Item 14, the review of the May 19th, 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Draft.
Sure. Thank you, Dottie. There are two articles that Wendy and I are asking the board to consider voting to include and recommend tonight. One is Article 10. It's financial housekeeping, it rescinds previously authorized borrowing. This would rescind $344,000 out of $950,000 of an authorization for water main replacement and repair on Pond Street, Cloise at Brook and Black Brook Road. We did not end up borrowing this full amount due to receipt of additional state funding for Black Brook, Black Brook Road. We don't need to borrow it, and so we like to clear our books of debt authorizations, or else they'll just remain there indefinitely. So we'd ask for an inclusion and a recommendation.
Okay. Any questions? Craig?
So I move to, to, for Article, this is Article 10, right? Article 10, to include and recommend Article 10.
Second.
That's Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you. Article 13 is Report in Fiscal '26 Budget of the Community Preservation Committee. This article is required. Wendy, Greg, and Lamonge, it's the annual budget of the CPA Committee that is distinct from the project-based grants that usually are on the warrant. You will notice there are none this year. There may be one if it's, if that grant, the local grant, is required to not lose state funding somewhere else. But much like the Planning Board, has opted not to submit major articles to the town meeting this year. CPA is also being thoughtful, and this is it that we have from the committee at this time. Again, maybe there will be one, but they, we're shelving a variety of those grants. Some of them overlap and interweave with our operating positions. And so, I won't speak for him, I wasn't at a meeting, but I can appreciate as the town administrator that it makes some sense to scale some of that back. So CPA has voted on this, recommended. Wendy and I would ask that you vote to include and recommend.
All right.
Well, I move to recommend and include, or include and recommend Article 13.
Second.
That's Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay. So Item 15, the discussion and vote of ratification of the memorandum of agreement for fiscal '26 with the Professional Administrative Employee Association. So we can go into executive session to return to open session.
Yes.
And we'll take that on, but before we do that, let's just do 16, 17, and 18, so that we don't have to remember those also. So we have the acceptance of minutes from March 10th, 2025.
So I move, Bodger.
Second.
Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Town Administrator notes?
I have nothing prepared.
Sean, Assistant Town Administrator notes?
No, none for me.
Anybody from the board? I just, I, since we were talking about GIS, I was asked to come to Stonehill to one of the classes there, a GIS class, and they were talking about how to use GIS in measuring climate and environmental issues in the community. So they wanted to talk about what are some of the things that Easton is doing, you know, with that. We talked about some of the programs. There was about 12 students in the class, and their area of study ranged from everything from healthcare to economics. They weren't all environmental study students. And they were really great. They asked wonderful questions, they were very enthusiastic, they talked about how can young people participate in the community? Like, the, the conversation was very wide-ranging, aside from the value of GIS. And they did a couple of really cool storyboards, or story mapping, where, you know, you've got the data, but then it tells the story to the side. Really, really great job. So I just want to thank Professor Buckley for inviting me. I had a really great time, and I, it was very enjoyable, and I got to show off some of the fun things that we're doing in Easton, so.
One thing I forgot, if I may, I want to congratulate the Oliver Ains Boys Basketball Team that came in second in the state in Division II, losing by, what, one point in overtime?
Oh, wow.
So that was extraordinary for them. So congratulations to, to that boys basketball team.
That is great. Awesome. All right. We are going to take a motion in a second and a roll call vote to go into executive session under Purpose III of Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. And we will return to open session to just make an announcement of where we stood with that, and we'll close from there. So can I get a motion, Craig?
So I move, Bodger.
That's Bodger and Lamb?
Stebbins, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes? Great. Thank you.
We are back from our executive session and pleased to report that we have ratified memorandum of agreement for the fiscal '26 with the Professional Administrative Employee Association, PAEA. And we just want to thank them and all our unions for working with us to get through another tough budget year this year. And we really appreciate their collaboration and the great work that they do. Connor, did you want to add anything?
My mic is not working. No, thank you to the leaders of this unit and the other town unions who've taken contract extensions during a tough budget year to help provide some stability. We appreciate it. We appreciate your work.
Well, with that, I would take a adjourn.
So moved, Bajer.
Second.
That's Bajer and Lim. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you everybody. And thank you Joe from ECAT. As always, you are a champion and we appreciate you sticking with us through this long meeting.
Thank you, Joe.